You were Ashley or didn't I?
Yeah, I'll take it. Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Gary's out doing other stuff. Okay, so I have two. Yeah, might be good to show you. You want to show you kind of exactly where we're looking here.
There you go.
So maybe two documents here. One is a letter from Jonathan he sent to us. And Corwin kind of massage a little bit to make sure.
Not me, Mr. Meister. Meister?
Oh, yeah. John and Meister.
Meister.
Okay, so a little backstory. So he, there's a subdivision up in the valley of Elkhorn Drive.
Yeah, Christie's asking for the video to be turned on.
Oh.
Go back to.
Oh, sorry.
There we go.
Okay.
So while I was just pulling this up, so in this subdivision, it was recorded a little while ago. And there's a note on the plat for two lots and one of the lots. What the note is, is saying that the finished floor of the lowest floor cannot be lower than three point seven four feet or something like that from the top of curb. And we think the reason is because it's kind of low spot in the road right here. We went back through our notes and and I think it's down a little more actually. Yeah. Yeah, keep going there. There you go.
Oh, this.
Went back through our subdivision folder, even reached out to the engineer who designed the subdivision. We really couldn't find the reason why. So this gentleman, he wants to go lower than this because he wants to come walk out basement. Doesn't want to bring in a lot of bill and things like that. So he provided a letter that releases a county of liability to allow him to go lower than this, than this three point seven four feet below the curb. And we were kind of okay with it. We don't love the idea, but we said, you know, reach out to some professional engineers and see what they say. He has a geotech report.
Yeah.
So this letter here from Gordon Geo Technical Engineering pretty much says, you know, it's okay if you go lower than this as long as you do some grading and things like that and follow the geotechnical report. So I guess we're coming to you to sit, to ask if you guys are okay with, with kind of going into this agreement, sign this agreement that Jonathan wants to enter into to release accounting of liability if something were to ever happen to his property. So.
Good question. Yes. So and Corwin, maybe this is more for you. If he sells this property, does this carry over to the next property owner?
That is the reason on the second page here, top paragraph. We put in language here that says we intend this to be a covenant running with the land. That was part of the concern with why I wanted this to be in the form of more of a contract with the county commission formally accepting it. If you choose to do that, because that way it will be the idea is that it would be a binding covenant that's recorded against the property.
Right.
So in that case, if you were ever sell this house, most of buy it, someone will see that on the title report and see that this is on there.
They would see the notice and we've done what we feel we can to make it binding on them.
So this is binding on, you know, obviously if we put it on the title.
Right.
Put it on record, then any future buyer will be notified about it. So they should be under the same obligation.
They should. Yeah, we did say in here, the owner and the county intend this to be a covenant running with the land. So.
Okay.
That's the idea.
Well, we, any year that people should be aware of flooded basements, you'd think this would be the year, but again, I won't say it, but.
Yeah, I mean, we've been driving that this road quite often. And actually yesterday we drove it again and there wasn't any water. I think the concern is there's a catch basin. A storm drain catch basin right there. And I think the concern was, this is kind of my opinion, is that if that were ever clogged, then maybe it'll can build up and go on to this property. But I mean, there wasn't any water standing or anything right there just now. So.
Okay.
But I mean, our opinion, yeah, just our opinion is kind of same thing is, yeah, there's a lot of water. This could happen, but you know, if you follow the professionals recommendations of bringing the house up so that doesn't go, the water doesn't run right in the garage and landscape. It should be fine. So that's kind of where we're at.
And we, you tied this as part of this agreement.
Yes. Yeah, we'll put all, yeah, this and a few other dependencies will be tied to this, this agreement.
Because the sub drains, you know, the, the sub drains are a critical part of this. And they've got to be daylighted where you got an escape route. Assuming that daylight doesn't put the water on his neighbor.
Yeah. I think there's kind of, there's kind of the drainage through there. It's kind of. It's not on the, I don't know if it was on a plat or anything, but it kind of, you can see it kind of goes between those houses there and stuff. So.
Is this on Elkhorn?
Yes. Yeah, so it's kind of drainage.
Follows this.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's that little creek that comes down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Isn't that the pond that we were sitting on the other day? Yeah.
It's the one right off Elkhorn.
Yep. And the neighbor to the, I guess, be the east, they have a, they have a similar note, but instead of three point, whatever feet it was, it's like seven point some feet. I don't know why. They came up with.
Well, that lots all below grade. Off the, you know, when you.
Yeah, exactly.
It's all below the road. So.
Yep.
So does he want his driveway below grade too?
No, his driveway will come up two percent from the curb.
Okay.
That was our concern is we don't like, it's not good to have.
I'd be a phone going riding with the college. So. He just, he wants a walkout base.
Exactly. Yeah.
Which is a good spot for a walkout basement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because of the terrain, he's got plenty of room to allow it to drain off.
It'll flow off of there fast. Barely steep. Yeah.
And we'll just make sure at the building permit review, we'll make sure that landscaping is, is going to make it so that it sheds away from, doesn't funnel to the house, kind of goes around into the back. So.
Yeah.
Make sure he follows these.
As long as he doesn't come back and blame us.
Yeah.
Or anybody in the future.
Yeah.
It was a mistake.
Yeah, so if that's okay with you.
Mr. Harvey? You know, we challenge these guys to find a way to say yes and help people. This is the way to do it. And I appreciate what you've done.
Yeah.
Is this your recommendation?
Yeah, our recommendation is to, yeah, to approve this letter and then sign it to release county liability. And with understanding that Jonathan understands.
Yeah, I'm going to support the staff.
Yeah, I am too. And I really appreciate you doing this rather than just giving the blank a go ahead and then two years from now, you know.
When he sells.
Yeah. All of a sudden we get flooded and he comes back and said, well, you guys let us do it. So it's your fault.
Yeah.
I, we get tired of that.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll try to bring this on county commission. I don't know if it'll be in consent or not, but we'll figure it out.
It's, it's, sounds like you gotta go.
Okay. Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Missions, I noticed Ron Gleason was on the call and I just wanted to say Ron works with the Nordic Trails Association.
Yeah.
And he's assisted the engineering department in getting into Utawa reservoir. All the snow to clean that structure. So I
Thank you, Ron.
Just kind of wanted to publicly thank Ron for his assistance in
Great.
and the Nordic Trails Association helping us get up there to carry our inflatable boat and, and get in there safely to
Clear it out.
clear that structure.
Good. Appreciate it, Ron. Appreciate you on that. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Hey. If anybody's out there, let them know we're ready to go.
Good morning.
Hello.
Morning. Hey.
How we doing?
Good.
How are you doing?
Participating in that economic development tour with the chamber last week. You did a good job.
And I told him he made the video.
Did he make the video?
Yeah, I made the video.
All right.
Man. I wish I would have seen you before time so I could have got some pointers on how to do a stump speech.
Yeah.
Harvey's the master of stump speeches, right? Sean, who else we got coming? We should have Charlie and Bill and Rick. Hey.
Charlie and Bill.
There's Charlie.
Round time.
There's Bill. I don't see Rick.
He's coming.
He's on his way.
How are you?
Yeah.
You too. Daniel, I saw your brother in Home Depot the other day.
Yeah.
So it's fun to run into people.
Yeah.
Outside of the context, like, it was like, recognize you. Oh, yeah. What's his first name again?
Spencer.
Spencer, that's right. Don't tell him, I forgot his.
Who's the favorite son of that Steven's pride? You know, I don't think you'd get an answer from my parents on that.
They know what it is. They just not gonna tell you.
Yeah. We'll find out. Okay, we have Rick with us. We're now going to our nine forty five agenda item, manufacturing technology code text amendment. Bill, Charlie, Rick, Sean, and the Black Pine folks are with us. So who's taking the lead here?
Bill.
Bill, well, I'm happy to. Go ahead.
So there were some questions about the height of buildings and the setbacks. So I sent a memo around last week.
Saw that.
Hope to clarify where we're at with those and.
Okay, so clarify.
Well, setbacks from roads that are eighty feet wide or wider or are planned to be eighty feet wide or wider are thirty feet and the height restrictions on those roads are also thirty feet. Now, if you go, if you want to go higher, you have to go further back as well up to forty feet. So if you go, and it's a one for one. So if you go one foot higher, you have to go one foot further back up to forty feet. And that's the maximum height along those roads.
Forty feet's the height, the max.
Correct. Now, keep in mind that in residential areas, the maximum height restrictions is thirty five feet. So and just that's the standard for residential areas already. So this isn't going to be a huge leap from either a thirty five or a forty foot height restriction. And we did that for a couple of reasons. One is to provide that transition and also to provide a visual corridor as you go down these larger roads so that you didn't feel like you were driving through a large canyon. Then further back and on other roads, either in the same circulatory roads in the same development or just other public roads that are installed or otherwise developed through the area. The maximum height is fifty feet. So it provides a transition visually and and in these way the buildings are laid out for something that's a little closer to the ground, closer to the road and then step back as you go further in.
Okay. I received that. I actually think it makes sense. So. Mr. Bollos, questions?
I had questions that were answered already.
Okay, Mr. Harvey?
Oh, I did. I'm good. Based on the email that you'd sent, I think it was pretty clear and I appreciate what's been done there.
Okay, perfect. All right. So what are our plans with this? So we're hoping to get this on your agenda in a few weeks.
Okay.
What's your take on that? Well, I think I've got most of my questions answered. So this was a big one. I had questions on the park. I got that answered the other day. Mr. Grover and I had a conversation the other day about one other thing I'm concerned about is a transition from the tech part to what's next door to it. And he informed me, you guys probably already know this, it's basically the planning commission came back and recommended mixed use.
Yep.
So, but I don't want to, I don't want to go from a tech to a one acre zone. I don't want single family homes sitting next to it. Makes no sense. You got to have a gradual transition. So as long as that's part of what our general plan says, and that's where we're headed, I'm okay with that.
Be comfortable if the zone next door remains the same. That would allow single family unless we rezone it. But maybe if somebody gets the option to rezone to commercial or do a single family.
Well, it's.
Knowing that there's a tech park right there.
I mean, obviously that's going to be up to the property owner to decide, but I want the general plan to basically say if they come in and we're not going to say, look, the only option you have is to do acre lots or half acre lots, that you have the option to do mixed use.
Okay.
So sometimes a mixed use there next to a tech park makes a lot more sense to me.
Perfect. Perfect. Yep. General plan. So the general plan amendment will come either in sync right with this one or in the meeting immediately after.
Right. And that's going to be part of our ordinance change.
That's right.
Right?
That's right. So we'll have the M and T zone. We're planning on getting it on your next available agenda. And then the general plan amendment will have on the one right after that. So about a week later and then the rezone the one right after that, if you guys are comfortable with that.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right. All right. Sounds like you got to go.
Okay. Okay.
That was it?
That's all we had for you.
That was it?
Nice and easy.
I wanted something hard here.
It's been hard.
Yeah. So you're going to put the Trader Joe Distribution Center out there?
Absolutely. Whatever you want.
All right, guys. Sounds like you got to go.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Much.
Have a nice day.
Thanks. Take care.
Look at this. Boom, boom, boom.
Geez, we're going to see you a half hour early. Ten fifteen.
I do have to go to school at one o'clock.
You do?
That's right.
Well, we've got a meeting at one.
Oh, yeah. You guys do?
We've got like, what's it called? Visit Ogden.
Yeah, we got our meeting chamber.
Meeting without.
They're not the chamber, but the.
Is that like a board meeting?
Convention Visitors Bureau. What is it? Which one is it?
Wonder if we can get.
It's the executive board meeting. So that's the one that's held in the Lotus Building.
Right. Wonder if we can get Ricky and his group over here.
Before ten fifteen.
Are we allowed to do that?
Well, according to what Chris Crockett said, it's our option, but. Sean, you want to pass me that mouse?
Yep.
You only have. Ron. Ron, just so you know, we're ahead of schedule. We're going to take a little break here. Ten or probably fifteen minutes.
All right, welcome back to those online. We're now here to take our agenda item three. The ten fifteen discussion, we're just a little bit ahead of schedule, but this is a discussion regarding election staffing. We have with us Ricky Hatch, Scott Park. Lawrence here and Sean Wilkinson's here. Ricky, you taking the?
Yeah.
Charge on this one?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right, I you each have a handout. I'll tell you what this request is. In a at a high level and then we'll talk about the details. The elections office is asking for one additional FTE. We're asking to do it without any change to the budget and I will get into the details of that in just a second. As far as justification why that's what the these three pages are for. The first page. Is how many voters a full time election staff serves on average? And I I just reached out to colleagues across the country is particularly ones that were fairly similar in size to us. If you look at the bottom San Benito, California, which is almost a vote by mail state, they they process a similar number of mail ballots to us. Their their FTEs serve just under ten thousand voters per FTE.
So now you said. Vote by mail state or vote by mail county?
Well, California has what's called the Voters Choice Act and so counties can opt in to being basically all vote by mail. And San Benito is one of those. They receive about ninety percent of their ballots are done are received by man.
Okay.
They still like like Utah, they still have vote centers, which I think is a good model so that folks that want to vote in person still have that option. So San Benito, their FTEs serve just under ten thousand, whereas you look at the top Jackson, Oregon, one FTE serves. Over sixty thousand voters. Now Oregon is unique in that Oregon is a truly one hundred percent vote by mail state. They don't have vote centers. You can't vote. You can't go vote in person in Oregon and so that means. No voting equipment, you know, no polling place voting equipment, no poll pads, electronic poll books to check in. No poll worker management, you know, recruiting or management. That's we think that's probably about a full time job, those three tasks themselves. And so it makes sense that Jack's that Oregon counties. Would be able to serve more voters per FTE. We looked at two additional counties, the two closest in size to Weber County here in Utah. One is Washington County. Which serves just slightly more than Weber County per FTE. The. County clerk there and election director said. You shouldn't use us as an example because we are swamped. The election director averages sixty to eighty hour weeks. And during the election season that goes up to ninety and even a couple of hundred hour weeks. They'll be asking for five FTEs, which is the same number that we would have with this change. They're asking that for their twenty twenty four.
That's Washington.
That's Washington. Okay. Davis County.
Yeah.
It looks like they're pretty efficient. They they serve almost fifty thousand voters per FTE. Keep in mind that office just split. And so they're going to be working some things out over the next year, but Davis County like Weaver. Borrows heavily from the clerk auditor office from others like last year. We had Craig Brand was down in elections last year, probably a quarter of his time. Because we had.
I remember.
Our new elections director, we had a couple of our folks get COVID. And so Craig stepped up and helped tremendously as did others. So I suspect that Davis number probably is a little bit over inflated. But if you look at the other ones, Jefferson County Missouri, Charleston, South Carolina, Skamia, Florida, Yavapai. Which also is a high vote by mail state. All of those are roughly half. Or you know, they serve half the voters per FTE.
And they similar in size as Weaver?
Yes, well Charleston and it's came here a little bit bigger. Yavapai is a little smaller and Hartford is. Slightly larger, but I tried to get ones that were, you know, within thirty percent of our size.
Yeah.
And there was no cherry picking to this. These are just people I know from these areas. So I texted them and they gave me their information.
Good.
Good.
Good information.
Let's look at historical Weaver historical values. This is the voter served per FTE and it and you'll see I broke the the first data point is in twenty eleven and then I went to twenty fifteen, just so it wasn't so long. But in twenty eleven, we had four point five FTEs in elections. Which is oddly enough, but well, right now we have four FTEs in elections. So we're a little bit less than we were when I first took office. So you'll see, you'll you'll see this the spike there in twenty twenty and the boxes. Are the total comp hours earned by the election staff in that year. So you'll see in twenty twenty, we were quote more efficient. We serve more voters per FTE, but that our staff took a heavy hit for that.
So that's ours.
Yeah, that's fifteen hundred comp hours.
Okay.
That were earned. And if you look at the average comp hour per employee per year, it's a hundred and seventy four. That's eight and a half percent overtime. That our elections office has put in since twenty seventeen on average. And so this is just to show that the number of voters have increased in Weber County from about ninety thousand to a hundred and twenty eight thousand. Just in the in the past seven or eight years. But our staffing has remained the same the same. And so this is why we think another FTE will help reduce the burnout. I remember in twenty twenty, our elections director said, I was this close, this close to saying. We're done. I can't do it anymore because it was it was pretty heavy. And last year was very similar with the staff, just just the burnout was was intense. Great. And then last, just the last page, this is a survey that was done in twenty twenty two by an academic group. Out of Florida, I believe, Reed College. And this shows the number of FTE. Time equivalents based off of the number of registered voters. In a county and you'll see two Weber County logos. This is the bar that that second to march to the top is Weber County's county size. And then so what that means is twenty seven percent of the counties of that size have. Between two and five employees. And so we're in the top quartile as far as efficiency or number of employees per number of voters. If we moved to five. Our square would move basically to the the larger square to the right, which we're still within the top thirty percent of counties as far as efficiency. And employee side FTE equivalents based off the size of. The number of voters. So that's where we are currently the small box and that's where we would be if we had a fifth. FTE. Now, the the way we can do this without an increase to the budget is we believe. Quite often the challenge that we have isn't labor because we can get poll workers and seasonal help, which is great. It's people who understand the systems and people who understand the processes more than just the folks that come three weeks or six weeks out of the year. And so what we've done is we've worked with Scott and reallocated. We're proposing to reallocate the wages from the poll workers that we use and the seasonal help that we use. And to reallocate that into a FTE. And so it would be no cost, no increase to the elections budget. But it would provide a tremendous relief for our election staff. And provide us some additional backup. When when Lauren was out with COVID. And Lauren and Daniel were out with COVID. They were the only two that knew how to run our envelopes order. And so we we were kind of. We were kind of stuck. And in the end, I think, didn't you come in? Just you and Daniel came in at night when nobody else was here.
We had me in there so someone could watch us.
But yeah. So this would also increase the backup options, which are so crucial when you've got some fairly complex technology that you have to deal with. So and Scott can talk to more details about which lines we'd be taking the budget out of and moving up into the salary lines, but we wanted to talk to you about it and let you know. Reason behind the need and the fact that it wouldn't impact the budget on our overall basis.
Are you eliminating? All of the seasonals?
No, this would just be a small portion.
Okay.
Because they're only there for a short amount of time. It's not a a large. It's not a large budget amount. That goes toward them, but it's enough that we would be able to help. Help cover this.
I'll probably cover that.
Yeah, basically what we would do is we'd be zeroing out the voting judges. We would be pulling a little bit from special projects if we needed to. And then we would pull the rest of them from those poll workers. So we have money in there and it's kind of a, I wouldn't say a slush fund, but it it's built up enough because you never know how heavy the elections are. So we've kind of set it at a level to try to. Hit the heavy election years, but in like a municipal year, we don't spend all of that money. So I think that if we we pull from those two, we're going to be able to smooth it out over time and have just a consistent salary expense. And over time, it's going to be the same amount of money as opposed to bumping up and down every every other year with the election cycles.
Yeah, because it's a presidential election. The next year, which was your highest on your other graph, twenty twenty was your big one. So I think you still think that's going to be okay.
I do. I think it's going to be okay. I I'm comfortable that they won't need any additional funding.
How much is in that fund right now?
In their entire budget?
No, for the poll workers.
So we have about fifty thousand that I'm proposing to take from the poll workers. We didn't.
Okay.
I didn't bring my detailed spreadsheet of the sum of.
So we pulled fifty. So what are we looking at for salary?
So it would be eighty four thousand dollars would be the total cost. It would be the equivalent of right now we have an election support technician that's at twenty four sixty an hour. And that would be what we are anticipating. We bring in somebody else at twenty four sixty. So that's our and and that's basically where I agree.
And if you got somebody in mind for this or you're gonna bid it, what's your?
We we just put put it out.
And if you talk to Sarah about this?
Not yet.
Okay. Well, the first thing I would say, I want.
Absolutely.
Before I'm gonna sign it, I want Sarah to weigh in on that.
And the reason we wanted to talk to you first is because this would be a midyear. We wouldn't.
Right.
Want to hire them starting, you know, December, because we want them to be fully current. For the presidential primary in March. But yeah, you're she is our next.
A year from. Year from now.
Yeah.
Now.
You you want to hire him now so that they're in for this election cycle to get some experience. Yeah. So they can actually add value, not be being trained during the presidential.
Yeah, well, we we made a commitment to. The HR, we're not going to pass anything out of here without her approval.
Then that's as it should.
Totally agree. We're gonna abide by that.
Great. All right. If so, could we do so we don't have to come back to you in a work session? Could we do a contingency if Sarah's okay with it and I'll have her send an email?
Yeah.
She you'd be okay as a commission.
I'm okay with that.
Okay with that.
Okay.
Under those.
Right.
Yeah, well.
Right.
And we'll talk.
So you don't have to come back, but I want something communicated from her that she reviewed it. She's okay with it.
Yeah.
She has our okay with all, yeah. Yeah, and if she says no, then I'm a no.
Gotcha. Yep, it makes sense.
So you've got to be able to sell it to her.
Okay. Great. It's the same grade as all other election workers, the three other election workers in there. So.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure we're not taking. I I don't want to. Have somebody hired at twenty eight bucks an hour, everybody else. So then the next thing you come in next year or next season is okay. Now now we're in a deficit. We got to raise all these. So, you know, yeah. Labor market starting to free up a little bit here. So we've got to start watching our budget.
Yep. Agreed.
All right, what else?
That's it.
Mr. Harvey question? Mr. Bollock? Okay. We'll wait. We'll wait to hear from Sarah. Yeah. There you go.
Sounds good. Thank you. You want to frame an old stump?
I'm putting mine on my shelf.
I don't have anymore. You didn't keep those?
Put them on my shelf.
Somebody may want those. Okay, thanks, Ricky.
All right, yeah.
Jim, you're gonna want them in another week. Did you keep those?
Yes.
All right, commissioners, our next meeting is North Fort Park.
Motion to saunter for fifteen.
Thank you. Motion to saunter.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right, we're sauntering for those online until ten thirty approximately.
All right, welcome back. I entertain a motion to cease the sonar.
Cease the sonar.
Motion all in favor.
Hi.
We're back in our work session for our ten thirty. Agenda item which is discussion regarding North Fork Park access by private property owners. And also the Olympic IOC guarantees Marty Todd Liam or you who's taking?
Todd go ahead.
Yeah, so Liam will give you. Legal's opinion.
Okay.
So as you guys are aware.
This is on IOC or?
No, this is on.
Okay.
First, so we have North River Trail that runs north out of Cutler Flats.
Right.
At the top of that trail, there is a intersection that goes on to some private property. Um. We in the past have had double locks on the north entrance and what we call the red gate, which leads out of Cutler up. Up that trail. Um. Over time it's it's loose. Let's just say it's loose in and outs and we've had.
Right.
A few incidents with vehicles back and forth me getting phone calls that they're four wheelers. There's there's a handful of small items. So about why I would say six months, nine months ago. We came and asked what what should we do about this? So we had a meeting and discussed that we should probably do a little more limited access to. That trail which they're using as an access point. At that point we engaged Liam to look at it legally from our standpoint. Um, the commissioners received a letter kind of outline the thoughts on that. And I think it was decided at that time. That the access would be granted when the park was open to the public. Therefore, that would mean we would take the gate. Lot second lock off our north gate. And leave the second lock on the red gate. So when the parks open to the public and we have traffic, they could get to them. When it was closed, whether it was snow grooming or other times they would not have access through there. That was sent out. The agreement was either all get on board or we would take a step to close that entrance totally. Subsequent to that, they came and we had a meeting with Commissioner Harvey about. You know how? This came to be our thought process, what they did or didn't like about it. And so we're back at the table Liam did a little looking into access.
They 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 hinted around or suggested that they were going to pursue litigation.
Yes.
Right. That was after we sent the letter.
Yeah.
After we had the meeting. Both.
During the meeting, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So we went back to Liam and just told him what came up in the meeting and kind of looked at it. So he's done a little looking at the maps because there is more property. Northeast of where they are with another group of parcels that are privately owned. So at this point Liam, would you like to?
Yeah.
Tell us what you see.
What I understand from the conversation that occurred as well as they thumped down the court case. It said that if you do this, it's basically constitutes a taking you got to compensate for compensate us for the taking of our. Lack of use to our property anymore. Um, we reviewed the case that they thumped down and said that proved their point and it is a very, very different. Outlying case that doesn't apply to this situation at all.
Got it.
Furthermore, that agreement that we have for those landowners to sign doesn't remove their access in total. Um, it just limits them and prescribes when and how they're going to access their property. I guess the third point would be there is alternate access around up through Avon and over to their property. So going back. Even further, even if we were to restrict their use or their use of our road through our property to their property. We would still be in a good situation to stand by that and say, no, you can't access through our property anymore period. Use your alternate access. It would not be a thing. So.
So there's a secondary access.
There is.
Up through Avon.
Yeah, it's longer, I'm sure depending where you come from.
But we're not blocking them off.
You're not blocking them.
Okay, that's the point, I think, under state law.
So yeah, legal sake, we're fine with. Saying hey, we're going to stick with the agreement. You're limited and when you can come, it's not a free for all. You can't just access our parks whenever you want to to get to your place. Legal has no concerns with us prescribing there's limitations on your access through our park, time, place, that kind of thing.
Okay. Okay, so this was uh, this was uh. Justin Eccles, who's a gentleman of the guy.
Yeah, he is an amazing man.
Great, but we like Justin. You know Thorn was Royal Eccles. Hmm, he used to be the airport manager. Yeah. And uh, who was the other guy Dusty or Rusty or Charlie?
I would have had it um. Ah, it's bad he has a nickname. Porky is his nickname. That's actually his name.
Or the Warners.
It is a Warner. Um, it might be a Charles or that's. Cause I have Corky in my phone. That's what he goes as. But yeah, his family has. Connection to parcels on both. The access piece now and the piece above. At least by name. I don't know who they all are.
Some of the problems, if you remember, Commissioner stem from. Not necessarily those persons that have been named, but other relatives that are sort of abusing. The intent. And bringing ATVs into the park or whatever it may be that. That we can't have.
Do you want to see on this? Do you want to see if? The meeting that we have changes. Behavior or do you want to just move through? Forward with it.
Well, the letters stated our intent already. The meeting came after the letter, correct?
Correct.
And.
I think what Commissioner Harvey is saying is do we want to? Have a grace period to see if the things will get better. Um. I think there was. Some honesty on both sides. I mean, they they use their four wheelers and side by side to go pick up people. At the red gate, can't do. And I think that was pretty clearly stated in the meeting. Are they going to go away? You know? And I think another thing you're getting, I kind of feel that because three people that are here are not necessarily.
They're not they're not the abuse.
They're not the issue, but when you get generations and friends and other things, it's it's gotten out of hand. And you know, when I get phone calls that there's ATVs and. Things in the park, we had a hunter, which I think was discussed during the meeting.
They admitted.
Admitted with a quad with tracks that was cat hunting in areas of our park where. The access, we don't allow motorized. I mean, we went to a good extent to logo all of our equipment and put lights on it, even our stuff that's off road use. Four by our little four wheeler and things like that. We want people to see it's us and not just somebody up there playing. We just need to decide. Do we do this round after round? Is it going to get better? Do we say? Here's where we stand. You know, it's kind of, I I think it's a little above our pay grade to make that.
Yeah, just to Todd's point, Commissioners, I think it was your name that went out on the letter.
Correct.
So I guess the question is, if you're asking. Do we want a grace period? We're asking, what do you, if you want us to do since?
Well, how?
Your name went out in the letter, but. Todd, are you willing to consider? A grace period to see how it goes? Or do you want to stick with the letter?
If you don't like the grace period, I'll back I'll back and just say this and we're done.
Right.
I would say I'm a little conflicted because I I don't want it to feel punitive. And it feels a little bit punitive, which. I don't think is why we're doing it. We need the problem resolved. And i- if we at this table feel strong enough that if we give them a summer season and we're seeing the same thing, that letter is going to go back out. I don't necessarily disagree with that. I- if you go historically in the past, we have not had the issues that we have. Is that a hundred percent because they were not doing it before? No, we have a lot of people using that park. So the number of people that are on those trails at different times that are seeing it has rose. So. I can't say that it's gotten worse. I can't say that it hasn't gotten worse. We're just being notified of bikers and hikers with. Vehicles flying by them and and just they're not the phone calls you want to get.
Right.
So it it's really, are you guys comfortable with saying we're going to go a summer if we see this stuff? Then the letter is going to go back out. Liam, your opinion on?
My opinion is the problem from my side is enforceability.
Yes.
Of them continuing to do this without a written agreement or anything in place. We just have an oral agreement letting them to come onto the park to go access their property. We have no way to really enforce. No, you can't bring your quad.
Have you have you adjusted a written agreement?
Well, that's what you gave them was a new written agreement.
Agreement concluded with the letter.
Also, you put the agreement with that. Remember the letter, okay? But they they refused to sign the written agreement.
And you know, they're like, if someone does it, cite them. It's not that easy. You know, we're a ways up in the mountains. If even if we call somebody, it could be five minutes, it could be twenty five minutes.
It's not reasonable.
And if you look at. It not being a public road. Really, the only thing we can cite them for is a no trespass and boot them off our property. There's no like you were speeding or you have a four wheeler on a path.
Right.
They would just be.
Just.
It's not that easy, you know, to his point about police ability. By the time a camp host hears and I get a phone call, it's happened.
It's gone.
So then my question, the is Liam is um, what? Um, without them signing the agreement, then what recourse do we have? Uh, just locking the gate?
Right, locking the gate without giving them notice. The agreement says that, hey, if you violate any of these terms, you agree that we can lock the gate. Now we do it. We just lock the great gate without them agreeing to it and it's done, right?
Yeah.
So we tried to take the nice approach with the agreement and provide them that liability way, right?
So it cuts off their winter access is really what it's cutting off. In the summertime theoretically, it's no different. As long as they stay within the rules, summertime is no different. So.
Because they're using ATV in the winter, you're saying.
Well, they do in the summer. But I'm saying their access theoretically hasn't changed when our gates are open.
But they can't get there in the winter.
Right, they can no longer open those either gate to get through there in the winter time.
Okay. So. If if we went the summer with a grace period and they're still continued to do what they were doing, we just would lock the gate.
Cause they. Say sign the agreement or we're going to lock the gate. Your blocks removed.
Period. Yeah, well, I don't think we move ahead without the agreement signed. Now, if you want to give them what the summer. To sign the agreement.
But I guess the point is what what is it going to change? Well, I don't think a summer of them.
No.
Not doing is going to change their opinion about blocking.
Right, right.
I mean, I put myself in their shoes. To me, that doesn't change the scope of the agreement. Um.
One way or the other, we're blocking access.
Yeah, to a portion.
And they talked about hunting and everything else. I think that is. Cause we locked the gate. October one, right?
Yeah, but we allowed dry camping or hunters. So since I've been in Parks and Rec, we have not locked gates. Till usually the second or third week of October.
But the agreement said.
Agreement, uh, I don't know if we specified a date.
I think or it says on or about, it basically says when our gates are open, they have access.
Yeah.
Is is. We do, and there's a lot of things that, you know, we shut water down at some point because of freezing nights, but we've left the camp to do dry camping.
Yeah.
We have a number of groups that will hunt out of there and it's great. We stop and talk to them and you know, they got their scopes.
Just told him what came up in the meeting and kind of looked at it. So he's done a little looking at the maps. Cause there is more property northeast of where they are with another group of parcels that are privately owned. So at this point, Liam, would you like to?
Yeah.
Tell us what you see.
What I understand from the conversation that occurred as well is they thumped down the court case. It said that if you do this, it's basically constitutes a taking. You gotta compensate for uh compensate us for the taking of our. Lack of use to our property anymore. Uh we reviewed the case that they thumped down and said that proved their point and it is a very, very different. Outlying case that doesn't apply to this situation at all.
Got it.
Furthermore, that agreement that we have for those landowners to sign doesn't remove their access in total. Um it just limits them and prescribes when and how they're going to access their property. I guess the third point would be there is alternate access around up through Avon and over to their property. So going back even further, even if we were to restrict their use. Or their use of our road through our property to their property. We would still be in a good situation to stand by that and say, no, you can't access through our property anymore, period. Use your alternate access. It would not be a thing. So.
So there's a secondary access.
There is.
Up through Avon.
Yeah, it's longer. I'm sure depending where you come from.
But we're not blocking them off.
You're not blocking them.
Okay, that's the point, I think, under state law.
So, yeah, legal sake, we're fine with. Saying, hey, we're gonna stick with the agreement. You're limited and when you can come, it's not a free for all. You can't just access our parks whenever you want to to get to your place. Legal has no concerns with us prescribing, there's limitations on your access through our park, time, place, that kind of thing.
Okay. Okay, so this was uh, this was uh, Justin Eccles, who's a gentleman of the guy.
Yeah, he is an amazing man.
Great, but we like Justin. You know Thorn was uh Royal Eccles. Hmm. He used to be the airport manager.
Yeah.
And uh, who was the other guy? Dusty or Rusty or Charlie?
I would have had it um. Uh it's bad he has a nickname. Corky is his nickname. That's actually his name.
Or the Warners.
It is a Warner. Um it might be a Charles or that's. Cause I have Corky in my phone. That's what he goes as. But yeah, his family has. Connection to parcels on both. The access piece now and the piece above. At least by name. I don't know who they all are.
Some of the problems, if if you remember, commissioners stem from. Not necessarily those persons that have been named, but other relatives that are sort of abusing. The intent. And bringing ATVs into the park or whatever it may be that's. That we can't have.
Do you wanna see on this? Do you want to see if? The meeting that we had changes. Behavior or do you want to just move through? Forward with it.
Well, the letters stated our intent already. The meeting came after the letter, correct?
Correct.
And.
I think what Commissioner Harvey is saying is, do we want to? Have a grace period to see if the things will get better um. I think there was. Some honesty on both sides. I mean, they they use their four wheelers in side by side to go pick up people at the red gate. Can't do. And I think that was pretty clearly stated in the meeting. Are they gonna go away? Uh you know? And I think another thing you're getting, I kind of feel that because three people that are here are not necessarily.
They're not, they're not the abuse.
They're not the issue, but when you get generations and friends and other things, it's it's gotten out of hand. And you know, when I get phone calls that there's ATVs and. Things in the park, we had a hunter, which I think was discussed during the meeting.
They admitted.
Admitted with a quad with tracks that was cat hunting in areas of our park where.
Hmm.
The access, if we don't allow motorized, I mean, we went to a good extent to. Logo all of our equipment and put lights on it, even our stuff that's off-road use. Four but our little four wheeler and things like that. We want people to see it's us and not just somebody up there playing. We just need to decide. Do we do this round after round? Is it gonna get better? Do we say? Here's where we stand. Uh you know, it's kind of, I I think it's a little above our pay grade to make that.
Yeah, just to Todd's point, Commissioners, I think it was your name that went out on the letter.
Correct.
So I guess the question is, if you're asking, do we want a grace period? We're asking, what what do you, if you want us to do since your name went out in the letter, but. Todd, are you willing to consider? A grace period to see how it goes, or do you wanna stick with the letter?
If you don't like the grace period, I'll back I'll back and just say this and we're done.
Right.
I would say I'm a little conflicted because I I don't want it to feel punitive. And it feels a little bit punitive, which. I don't think is why we're doing it. We need the problem resolved. And i- if we at this table feel. Strong enough that if we give them a summer season and we're seeing the same thing, that letter is gonna go back out. I don't necessarily disagree with that. I- if you go historically in the past, we have not had the issues that we have. Is that a hundred percent because they were not doing it before? No, we have a lot of people using that park. So the number of people that are on those trails at different times that are seeing it has rose.
Right.
So. I can't say that it's gotten worse. I can't say that it hasn't gotten worse. We're just being notified of bikers and hikers with. Vehicles flying by them and and just, they're not the phone calls you wanna get.
Right.
So i- it's really, are you guys comfortable with saying, we're gonna go a summer if we see this stuff? Then the letter is gonna go back out. Liam, your opinion on?
My opinion is, the problem from my side is enforceability.
Yes.
Of them continuing to do this without a written agreement or anything in place. We just have an oral agreement letting them to come onto the park to go access their property. We have no way to really enforce, no, you can't bring your quad.
Have you, have you adjusted a written agreement?
Well, that's what you gave them was a new written.
Agreement concluded with the letter.
Also, you put the agreement with that. Remember the letter, okay? But they they refused to sign the written agreement.
And you know, they're like, if someone does it, cite them. It's not that easy. You know, we're a ways up in the mountains. If even if we call somebody, it could be five minutes, it could be twenty-five minutes.
It's not reasonable.
And if you look at. It not being a public road. Really, the only thing we can cite them for is a no trespass and boot them off our property. There's no like. You were speeding or you have a four wheeler on a path.
Right.
They would just be. It's not that easy, you know, to his point about police ability. By the time a camp host hears and I get a phone call, it's happened.
It's gone.
So then my question, the is Liam is um what? Um without them signing the agreement, then what recourse do we have? Uh just locking the gate?
Right, locking the gate without giving them notice. The agreement says that, hey, if you violate any of these terms, you agree that we can lock the gate. Now, we do it. We just lock the great gate without them agreeing to it and it's done, right?
Yeah.
So we tried to take the nice approach with the agreement and provide them that ability way, right?
It cuts off their winter access is really what it's cutting off. In the summertime theoretically. It's no different. As long as they stay within the rules, summertime is no different, so.
Because they're using ATV in the winter, you're saying.
Well, they do in the summer. But I'm saying their access theoretically hasn't changed when our gates are open.
But they can't get there in the winter.
Right. They can no longer open those either gate to get through there in the winter time.
Okay.
So. If if we went the summer with a grace period and they're still continued to do what they were doing, we just would lock the gate.
Cause they. Say, sign the agreement or we're gonna lock the gate. Your locks removed.
Yeah, well, I don't think we move ahead without the agreement signed. Now, if you wanna give them, what, the summer? To sign the agreement.
But I guess the point is, what what is it gonna change? Well, I I don't think a summer of them not doing is gonna change their opinion about blocking access.
Right, that's not.
Yeah, I mean, I put myself in their shoes. That, to me, that doesn't change the scope of the agreement um.
One way or the other, we're blocking access.
Yeah, to a portion.
And they talked about hunting and everything else. I think that is, did we lock the date? October one, right?
Yeah, but we allowed dry camping for hunters. So since I've been in Parks and Rec, we have not locked gates. Till usually the second or third week of October.
But the agreement said.
Agreement, uh I don't know if we specified a date.
I think, or it says on or about, it basically says when our gates are open, they have access.
Yeah.
Is is. We do, and there's a lot of things that, you know, we shut water down at some point because of freezing nights, but we've left the camp to do dry camping. We have a number of groups that will hunt out of there and it's great. We stop and talk to them and. You know, they got their scopes out and and we're not trying to limit that for our community in 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 any way. You know, I think it's a nicety that we can do that.
Uh huh.
Um, so that's why there's not really a hard number on it. I mean. We should be opening May first, as you guys heard this morning, probably not gonna be a lot of that park open May first. So that number is a little give or take, but. Theoretically, yes, May one to October one is our camping time. But we have two festivals this year that are after that.
Um I guess if we're looking for a recommendation, I personally would recommend that we. Lock the gate until they sign the agreement or the gate just stays locked. Like you said, in three months, it's not gonna change.
No, I I I I agree with Marty. Till they sign the agreement, I don't think we give cut them any slack. I mean, that's, that's in their court.
I don't recall does the agreement, the letter that went out with the agreement have a date for them to return those? I believe it did.
The letter itself?
Yeah, or does the agreement?
Anywhere, is there a date for that? Is there a deadline for them?
Right.
No, uh the letter might, the agreement does specify. I have to look that up, let me see if I can pull it up. While you're looking that up, Liam, it also complicates it in that it's multiple owners, correct?
Right.
Right.
Yep.
Which is. They all have to, how many?
Uh, I think there's eight for eleven pieces of property. Does that ring a bell with you, Commissioner?
And are all um. Objecting to it or just? There were the three called themselves the spokespersons for the eight.
For the eight, yeah. We didn't specify a date on the letter.
And there's no date on the agreement?
No. Not a sign by this day.
Maybe that's our follow-up then.
Yeah.
We just say, you know?
Get it locked if you know, by this day.
Yeah, we're following up and.
You got such and such timeframe to get us back to agreement.
No little time, because nobody gets access for a minute.
Right.
Right. So this is your portfolio, but what do you wanna do? I I, what I wanna do is give maybe it's probably wrong and weak. Is to give them a little bit of a great spray and say, you guys gotta sign, but you've gotta sign this agreement. You guys. Uh it's just, I think being able to enforce it, go ahead and cite them. That's unrealistic.
Right.
You know? Uh. Well, you're penalizing us because of your lack of ability. I can hear what they'll say. Cause of your lack of ability to have a sheriff up there when they're in the act of committing the robbery. Or not the robbery, but the.
But it, but our solution is, we can solve that without having to call a deputy.
By locking the gate. You don't have the issue if you lock the gate.
Simple, much simpler.
Then they keep cutting the chain and then what do we do?
Well, then that's a different issue.
Okay, but that's that that's what'll happen. So then what do we do?
Trespass.
Yeah, and then, okay, so how do we now?
We'll put a trail cam up and then we'll see who's cutting the chain and then. I I guess if you wanna take it to the end, right? I mean.
Well, let's just, but we need to because that's what's gonna happen. We know what's gonna happen because they've cut the gate in the past. Right?
Liam, I guess.
Uh we cut their lock. I'm not sure they've cut ours since I've been there. We cut their lock because we had an event on a holiday weekend and they locked us out. Oh, probably not purposefully, but we made a made a phone call, yeah, because you gotta lock the lock and someone skipped our lock. And I was not gonna have two thousand people up there with no medical access to a portion of our park, so I cut it myself.
Okay.
Again, I'm not gonna tell. One of my guys to cut it and have a target on them. I cut it.
To Marty's point, the agreement does call out the fact that if they deviate from that. Exact trail or road up to their parcel, we consider that didn't trespass. And so it does make that clear as well. Deviation down your set route is going to be considered trespass.
Liam, uh but if we lock the gate and they cut it and came in, is that trespass?
Well, yeah, then we call the sheriff's office, get them on trail cam and then, yeah, then we can prosecute that if it's still be.
I would hate.
Yeah, it's damage to government property. There's a lot of weird little curballs in there, but.
So. Uh how about July first, Commissioners? That sounds reasonable to you or do you wanna go longer?
That's fine. I don't like it. Boy, I I don't like it. They're gonna create a lot of. They're gonna create a lot of headache for me.
Well, and that's why we're bringing it to you because, I mean, we all get targeted for different reasons, but understand there's gonna be some pushback and.
Yeah.
You know, that's that's why we asked you guys about it prior to and have you send it out because. You know, I'm not always comfortable sending my guys into into a situation that I know is gonna be a little hostile.
I think sometimes, and that's the reason why I wanted, why I wanted to look at it. I just that uh, what did you call it? A grace period or? It's because, look, we talked to you, it didn't seem to work. We're gonna go back to this. I'm saying, you know, you want us to cite them. We want you to control your family.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, look. We're we're not gonna do that. I I I think sort of, I think what I'd like to do is I'll call up Royal. And I'll just say, look, here's the deal. We're gonna give you a. Gonna get, we're gonna try it out for a year. But if we have an infraction. You want us to cite them. We're not gonna, we don't have the resource to do.
And just so you know, in this conversation, it says we're gonna visit it every year. Any infraction will change that agreement. So so that's in there anyway. It's just the winter access. It's gonna be the choke point.
Right, so I'm just gonna say, hey, look, and if you have an infraction, we want, we want you to, you want us to cite and we want you to control your family. If we have a problem, we're gonna lock the gate. Period. And then you'll have to, we'll go back to these. That I didn't think we'd get the pushback like we did. I didn't think it would be.
We did.
Uh so I didn't understand the gravity. And unless you think that's a weak position. I'm happy to support. It's just a little tougher, but. Listen, I may be clouded because it's a relationship, but I can have those calm, I can have those hard conversations.
Well, we were, when we came to Commissioners and asked you to kind of sign the letter, in some respects, we were trying to insulate our staff, which is on a more daily basis are. Gonna have to interact with these folks up there on the trail at the gate, right? So. Um.
Listen, if that happens again, or when it happens again, then it'll get to Todd. Do you just call me and I'll just say, hey, look, this is what's happened. This is how this is going down. Well, so your staff doesn't have to get involved. I don't want your staff to have. I that's, that is a problem.
I think we're putting ourselves in in no man's land. I think we either need to say, July first, it needs to be signed and we're moving forward on it, or we take it off the table. With a phone call that says, if we see. Any variation from, and and maybe we work on an agreement. That is. What is supposed to be happening now, that's not. And then we have this one and say, we're gonna give you a written agreement for a single year. Not limiting your access, because I don't think we can say, let's just ride it out for the summer, because the summer doesn't change.
Okay.
So do we say, here's a written agreement for one year? Outlining what the, we believe the verbal agreement to be at this point. No four wheelers. Do not get off of that path. If you come in the winter, it's a straight line in that gate to the red gate to your property, which is not a lot. If that gets violated, we are gonna reissue. The original agreement on year two. I don't think we can say, let's just play out a summer, because we're not playing at anything.
If you do that, what's gonna change? Why give them a year? We've given them a letter.
I agree with you.
We gave them a letter. Why, why are we now backtracking from that letter we gave them?
I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying, it has to be one or the other. We can't pretend we're somewhere.
You know, it's like, okay, we're sorry we sent you a letter. Now we're not enforcing that. That's not good.
And I'm not saying I agree.
Yeah.
There's just, all that's missing is the deadline. Let's give them a deadline.
There needs to be an agreement signed, and if that agreement, July one seems long to me. I think it should be June one, but.
Well.
Whatever.
Commissioner, you were kinda wanting a grace period. I I'll, we'll go with whatever date Commissioners think is reasonable.
Well, I, listen, that's. But I wanna date. Support the team. If you if you wanna date, that's that, I'll I'll do whatever. I'll just, it's just a harder conversation, but it's. It's probably ripped the band-aid off.
That's forty, almost forty-five days, June first.
Yeah, I just think by.
Twenty-five days is great for me.
What is?
Forty-five days, June first.
Yeah, okay, June first is the day. Now.
Yeah.
Can you write me some kind of a letter that I can send on? To these, the three that came to that meeting.
Absolutely.
Something to just say, hey, listen, after we've considered this. Listen, we wanna be good. This doesn't limit your access. What it does is. This, as we've reviewed this more. We're not limiting your access. What we are is. Is define all that stuff out and this is how, and you're gonna have to go around Avon if you wanna do this and. And then, look, this is how it's gonna be and then I'll send it on.
Got it.
But we need to, what about the agreement? And 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 in that, the letter will have the agreement. I want an agreement. I don't, I don't want to say, so the agreement.
And that's what I was getting at. We we need something in writing either way, being in La La Land.
They've got some. Yeah, you know, verbal doesn't cut it.
Yeah.
So I'll send it from. We all know that. So we're gonna do a new agreement.
No, same agreement, new letter.
New letters, we need to sign the agreement by June first.
Give them a headline on the agreement. Yeah, it's just.
Okay.
All right.
As long as there's a date in there.
Good.
I'm okay with that.
But does the agreement say that it's revocable?
One year.
Well, I mean, is the county, like, thing I worry about is. We're giving them a license uh to use the land, right? Is it enforceable contract? I mean, what are they giving us in return for that? Or is it, or is it just merely a statement from us, like, we are going to let you do this? Uh it's through our permission. We can revoke it anytime and when. They are agreeing. Clearly that they indemnify us. If they do deviate from the path and go mess around and play, they're on the hook for all of that. Uh. Do we have trail cams up there or anything to show?
We don't currently. We do have trail cams in places. And we've moved them around because we've had the dumpster filling and all, it's it's a little. Chase the tail game, but we we have them available.
I think the visual of them seeing a camera. They're gonna think twice before cutting them off. I mean, now, I know we're opening up access um.
Well, it's pros and cons, because the more visible you make it, the less likely it'll stay there.
Mm-hmm.
I just.
Right, I I think you.
I I mean, we can fortify it.
But the footage, though.
Yeah, I mean, currently ours are SD cards, so if the camera's gone, the SD card's gone. We can get a fortified box for it that locks. And put something a little more permanent there. Um and that's not hard to do.
Put it on a high pole, maybe.
Well, or use a tree. I mean, we have, we have a lot of natural high poles around there. We just need to fortify it because. It it will disappear. And I mean, I'm not even saying necessarily buy them.
I I mean, I don't know.
It's not a very expensive choice.
You know, just back when we were done with.
Just go with stuff on you.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking a four hundred dollar. Camera of some sort and we get it locked up there.
But at your point, Chris, earlier, you're right. If they don't wanna sign the agreement, we can just issue a statement and say, hey, we lost the gate. There is no more access. Mark. Or we say, we're gonna continue to allow this until we change our mind?
Right.
Well, so which brings up the point on the revocation. So let's say that they sign that agreement. But then four months down the road, they're in there trespassing again. Do we have the right to terminate?
We can terminate it at will.
Okay, that's. They really don't have any illegal easement to our property.
Right.
You know, I don't want them to have the ability to come back and say, look, we have an agreement until June of twenty twenty-four. Get off our back. I want, if they, if they break the agreement.
Right, we can terminate it.
Two separate pieces. If they break the agreement and there's a yearly review.
Okay, Dr. Real Estate, now I've got a question for you. Look, these guys have been accessing their cabins. Through our property for.
Decades.
They they, in fact, they made a statement. You have that property because our family donated it to Weaver County.
We bought it.
Okay. So that's a legal, is it, they have a prescriptive right? I don't.
Prescriptive right.
These guys don't whether we get a prescriptive right.
It doesn't work.
Which I don't believe they do. And we've got a gate there. Can you, doesn't need to. That needs to be in the letter. You don't, you do not have a prescriptive right through this piece of property, through our property.
The commission, they were relying on in your discussion and they're they're, they are incorrect. They are incorrect on that.
The Commissioners years ago created the Weaver County. Conservatory Company, something of that. That company raised funds to purchase the property and then donated that property to the county. So there was purchases for parts of that through that company and then the company was dissolved.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could have been their fault, their family that created that conservative, conservatory.
The Commissioners created it.
With them as. Members?
No idea.
They should have reserved access for us as part of the real estate.
Yeah, and and they didn't. And maybe, you know, back then, who perceives it? I just, I've listened. It's, I'm gonna hear every other angle coming that we didn't hear before. Cause they're gonna be, they're gonna be.
So does this require, nothing's written. What you're, I, what I hear you saying is. With something, is there in a title search or something way back that they had access that we don't know about? Is that something?
Well, then they'll have to. They have to have that through. Have to have approved. Bottom line, we're saying, you've got access if you live by our rules. If you don't live by our rules, we're gonna cut off access, which we have the legal right to do.
Right.
That's all right. We just want you to be a good neighbor. We're wanting to be a good neighbor if you live by our rules, but you're not gonna come on my property. That's okay, and go out there and, you know. Trash my river.
And we'll send a letter saying, please agree by June first.
Yeah, okay. You okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, yeah, okay, done. Thanks, guys.
They have one more.
Yeah, we've got Olympic IOC guarantees. Let's talk about that.
So Commissioners, you received this this letter in a email. And and I explained it there. I'll just recap um. The, and I'm, I'm not speaking for the IOC or or the Salt Lake Olympic Committee. Obviously, I'm just going off the notes that the organizing committee told us in a meeting. Which is. Somewhere around October, the organizing committee for the Games uh will enter into formal discussions with the IOC. And a targeted dialogue about bidding for the Olympics. Right now, the organizing committee is trying to collect these guarantee commitments, which you see in the letter. That they're hoping to have by May twenty-third. They're working with ten jurisdictions. Um, we're one of those jurisdictions. Uh currently, they have three that have got completed letters back. Basically. This, these commitments are. Uh. Stuff like you will agree, if if we host the Olympics, you'll agree to comply with. Disabilities Act and you uh, you know, you'll commit emergency services when necessary, those types of things. I've given this to Liam. Uh and Liam, correct me if I'm wrong, but uh we're really not committing ourselves anything here. It's more like a pledge that we will be on board. If in fact and when the Olympics do come. Uh but they would like this signed and returned to them uh just from all the jurisdictions. So I bring it to you, just uh and with Liam saying, I think we're okay to sign it. Uh if. If you'll agree, uh and then my question would be. Does it need to go to commission meeting to be agreed upon and signed or can a commissioner just sign it?
Uh if they want, the commission has a hold to sign this, send it to their meeting after you guys sign it in.
Yeah, it's got all three of us listed as guaranteed, so. It doesn't have a fiscal, uh no responsibility type.
No.
No, if you read. The pledge is.
I have. Yeah, I, there's not a, there's not a financial obligation. I don't have any pride in that.
Okay. Um so are you okay if I just send this through commission meeting and have you?
Yeah, I.
Is that what you're saying?
It probably should happen that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh.
But.
Send that through.
But just so you're aware, uh. I have had a discussion with Senator McHale. He's actually back in Boston, just getting back from the marathon. So I have, plan on having a discussion with him and Jim Russell um next week sometime, just to go over. They were put in charge of the funding.
Right.
I just wanna clarify so we know exactly what our obligations may or may not be.
And then we can circle back after that and.
We can circle back after I have that conversation.
Okay. All right, I'll check back with you a couple of weeks then on that.
So, but I I see no issues with this.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
That it?
Yeah.[1689.81]
Thanks, gentlemen. Okay, let's, what's eleven oh five? So we're ready to move ahead. If you want to, if you see the sheriff out there, send him in. How'd your school business go?
Great, I have one.
You have another one today?
Wow, at one.
Which one?
Yesterday, uh, Bridge out in Roy. It's a charter.
That's a charter. Sheriff, welcome. For you. Good. Let's start our eleven A M agenda item five, county sheriff office update. Sheriff Ryan Arbonne is with us. Go ahead, sheriff.
Boy, there's no hesitation.
No, we're moving.
Oh. Yes, we are. This is nice. Thank you. Good morning and it's glad to see all of you here. Um, we get uh, through a couple of update things. The sheriff's office on our website is in beta phase right now. We are about ready to open a civilian response to active shooter training and events. We've received a lot of calls recently from big companies to do walkthroughs and planning for active shooter. And it consumes a lot of time and a lot of resources. So, uh, Chief Perry and I have uh, come up with some uh, plans to uh, and reach out to some individuals that were some resources. So there's a click on a video. We think the video will help most people get through that training. And then there's a, as, we're gonna do a quarterly training for large companies. Uh, that if they want to come in and do it at the sheriff's office. At the sheriff's office. So only be involved out of the shooting complex. Nothing. No shooting. So. We've no shooting. It's just a training class. Okay. Yeah, we don't, there's no guns involved or anything like that. It's a scenario based of what, what to do. We did used to have that one facility. Uh, that would have been a decent tool for this, but we don't have that anymore.
Which was.
Swanson Center.
Although.
All, all that stuff was, we found out, uh, six months ago, it was gutted and thrown away.
Yeah, what I heard.
So. That's your guys, the pop, the, the other piece of the property out there, you know?
Yeah.
That was quite a facility too. It was a great facility.
Okay.
All right, um, just a reminder, I am on the schedule tonight to present on our architectural uh, contract.
Mission agenda?
Yes, tonight.
Okay.
Good luck. Thank you. Uh, Chief Reese.
You didn't present or?
Yes, I will present.
Great.
Uh. Uh, Chief Reese wanted me to let you know that the kitchen floor and roof are moving along just nice and we have a great team working to make sure we're meeting schedules, timeframes and.
Is the floor done yet?
Almost. How are those million dollar kitchens out back those tempers? Boy, one of them looks like a Little Caesar's pizza. Semi, cause you know, the pizza, just from a distance, it looks like Little Caesar's is purging pizza there. But uh, it's going, it was a few kinks the few, first few days, but uh, we're getting the inmates fed, so it's working.
That's been going on for what? Couple, three weeks?
We did a video on it, but it's never been posted.
Why not?
I don't have access.
Remember, we talked to Danny about that.
Sean's team has also been very helpful in making sure we get things. Appreciate that. Thank you.
We're going, okay.
It's, it's moving in the right direction. We're not, we, I think there was a estimated two day delay.
Okay.
But nothing outside of the realm of not normal.
Okay.
Just happens.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't need to spend a whole lot of time on flooding. Uh, I can uh, tell you that uh, uh, we are using our drones a lot to help.
Okay, and we appreciate that.
And so, uh, I asked Horton to start calculating and recording the time that we're using. Cities are reaching out to us for help. We want to help. Don't misunderstand it, but it's, it's, it's using those to help. Identify the issues.
We'll need those.
That documentation.
For that dog, yeah, for being.
Yeah.
Even for the county stuff.
Yeah.
County and city.
Yeah, exactly. So I asked him, uh, talking with Eli, he was sharing just some uh, reference dates that um, the last flood that they had in two thousand eleven was that uh, July something still coming down from the mountains. So this is not uh, short term. Uh, as you guys know, it depends on how fast we warm up. So this is running for at least a few months.
Eli and uh, doing a great job, by the way.
They are.
They are. They're, they're skipping meetings and, and that's okay. They need to be out there.
We've had them up here.
I think they're coming later today, too.
They are.
Sheriff, this, so you know, I have Courtland working on providing a legal memo that will circulate to Eli and the team.
Okay.
Regarding legal access across private property to address.
Yes, yes.
And that might be another reason to consider in the future declaring a local emergency is that there's provisions under the law that gives us more flexibility, but uh, Courtland will put that opinion together for you, just so our employees are comfortable in having to address it.
Yeah, that's probably important because a lot of these blockages we're seeing are often only access is private property.
Yeah, and we want to make sure we respect the pri- uh, property.
And every flight is recorded too. So, cool, good.
We, if we, if we get that, we'll be able to message that to the public that, that we.
Yes.
That we anticipate having access on their property and.
Yes.
As an, I mean, I wouldn't see that they would not want us there for helping to mitigate flood issues, but.
You always have the.
You'll always have the ones who say, why are you on my property? So we, I think we should message that.
So Courtman has reached out to all of the civil attorneys in the state, so he's just gathering those opinions right now. So we'll get that opinion and then we can decide what messaging would be appropriate. One of the things that came up in our staff meeting today, though, that concerned us was we're probably going to get people asking us to reimburse them for damages. Um, which under the law, we, you know, we think that we're immune. There's ex- there's always exceptions. So it's generally what you need, so. That's something we're gonna anticipate.
You know, but I think good forum would say, you know, I wouldn't mind if somebody came across my property for the flood. But if they are gonna leave big ruts and stuff like, and, and that may just happen, I don't think it should be my responsibility to to fix it, or am I wrong?
So under law, you're gonna be generally immune. Um, but there's always policy exceptions and it, people will be reimbursing the commissioners decided to do it. It's just that it's in and of itself is opening up on flooding.
Yeah, oh, that, it, it is, but on the flip side.
Yeah, yeah.
Boy, can you imagine a truck vehicle going right across your lawn and?
Right.
We'll, we'll look at what happened up in Huntsville, might get home tonight and see what uh, damage that did. But we had that, I had that conversation with Sean yesterday. We had a request, I won't mention any names, about supplying an individual dirt. And I said, I told him no, this point in time, because once we open that floodgate, then who else do we have to supply to? But I think what you're saying, Commissioner, is a little different. If we go in and actually, then I think we need to look at it on a case by case basis.
Yeah, absolutely. Especially if you got someone who needs cooperative.
Yeah.
Right.
I, to me, it's, to me, it's.
A, a bunch of other properties.
Yeah.
Yeah, on a case by case. We're probably talking about the same one. I've received two requests for reimbursement. My plan is just, you can file a notice of claim with the county if you want. Generally, it is our position that we are not liable for these types of things.
Yeah. Well, you know, as far as the dirt goes, you know, we've got people, we've got companies supplying sand. But I don't think it's uh, in our best interest to start delivering dirt. Cause we, we've had some farmers out there that have used their own dirt, actually paid for their own dirt.
Right.
To haul on. So the minute we start saying, okay, we just open it up, so let's be real careful with that.
Well, and but to that point, Lisa's done a good job communicating with the LDS church. And different, with different uh, stake centers across the area where they're allowing their parking lot to be used as.
For sandbags.
As, yeah, for sandbags and volunteer efforts. And that, while that's private property, under the, that is private property. I think it's a coordinated effort and, and she's using, she's actually talking with somebody in, down in Salt Lake, a regional somebody that's that talks to everybody up and down the whole Wasatch front, so.
Yeah, which we want to continue that.
That's good, so, okay.
Hey, Sheriff, keep going.
All right, um, House Bill sixty one, I have uh, reached out to Alred's office, talked to Sarah Swan. Uh, this, uh, as you guys know, is the one that uh, designates the sheriff's office to be responsible for coordinating school safety.
Right.
Every school, public charter, uh, Ogden City Schools, Weaver County Schools. It's gonna be a, quite a lift. Uh, Sarah and I discussed what kind of a, a level of, of authority and experience of the person. We both believe that uh, it's gonna be a lieutenant level. So I'm gonna be requesting the county commission to fund uh, here shortly. Uh, to a new position for a lieutenant to handle the school safety. This is gonna be a heavy lift.
Wait a minute, you, one lieutenant?
One.
To oversee all the S R Os?
So that's, there's a fine line on when, and, and I don't want to get too far out in the weeds about, we are not in control of, we're not. All the S R Os are not gonna be under us in the sense of who's in charge. It's coordinated to make sure that they got a safety plan and threat assessment going on in every single school. We have to go into the public and charter schools and say, you need to form a security team that's gonna assess this and work with. So we'll be working with all the S R Os, but we need an additional position of that.
Well, we want to have that discussion. I've actually talked to the sponsor and legislative people about that. Was never there.
Funding?
Yeah, but there was never their intent to put that burden on. And they don't, they don't view this as that we, basically there were just you, we don't think you guys need to hire a full-time person for this. We just have to sign somebody to coordinate it when the situation. So I want to get to the, though.
Wilcox said different to me.
Legislation doesn't say that.
Well, right, but, but if you, I mean, they, when you look at all the schools, you go down to the southern counties, they have very few schools.
Right.
Right, but when you come up to the Wasatch front, it's a whole different ballgame. There is a lot of work that needs to be done here.
Well, I'm just talking about what the legislation says.
Right.
And what it requires. It doesn't require us to hire uh, an F T E to do that. It said basically.
Right, well, uh, yeah, and, and I know it's not a requirement by the law, but I'm coming from the point, I don't have the manpower to take one of my lieutenants or sergeant to do this from their already existing.
Right.
Uh, responsibilities. We need to create a new position to do this.
Right.
Yeah.
Ask a question or make a statement. If we do this, then I really believe we need the school districts, Weaver and Ogden at the table. And whatever capacity the charter schools and private schools have to contribute, we can. They should help fund this.
Absolutely.
Because we're providing the service for them that, I don't know if you're in private schools. I know you're.
We're in contract negotiations right now. We're not in any private school or charter. They've reached out to us and we've offered services and gave them a cost and they've all just have not come back.
Exactly, because there's a cost. So if there's gonna be a cost and we feel like we need an additional person. Everyone who's receiving that protection and, and that service, I think, needs to be at the table.
Right. Absolutely. But according to ledge research.
Correct.
Who interprets the statute, there's no requirement on any county or municipality to go out and hire an F T E to do that.
Right, but their expectation is to use someone in-house.
That's the expectation.
I don't have that person.
Well, and so that's why I agree with Commissioner Bowles. We need to get the school districts in and say, look. But I'm not gonna take the burden of the county now hiring an F T E without participation from these schools that have benefit, so. And, and again, I go back to the statute. If they want to change the statute and make an unfounded mandate, then do that, but it's not that right now. So, and I don't want to, the minute we fund that person, then we've created that off, you know, we've created the expectation from those schools that we're gonna handle it. Okay. So I want to follow state law.
Sure. Well, I understand. I, I just know that, that regardless of who funds it, the work's gotta be done and I don't not have a person to do that.
Right now, we don't have the capacity right now. We cannot be the only one at the table. That's, that's how I.
That's where I'm at. And, and I, I understand where you're coming from. And I agree with a hundred percent with Commissioner Bowles. If we, if we need that person, then the people are gonna benefit from this because of this. Either the state or the school district, they're ready, needs to come to the table. But I don't feel that the citizens of Weaver County should pay for that, you know, without some type of help from the players that's involved, i.e. the school district.
For sure, for, um, in the bill, there's actually some grant appropriations.
Right.
Uh, but it has to be applied for through the L E A and then it would transfer down however they want it to disperse it. But there is, there are some grant appropriations in the bill that would allow for reimbursement for a position.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that's ongoing.
No, no, it's not.
Yeah, Will Cox and Joe Carey.
No.
Will Cox and Joe Carey came to my office uh, last week and they said the bulk of the seventy-five million is to retrofit and upgrade the security of the school.
That's right.
Not for positions, but in some circumstances, yes.
There are.
We need to have that discussion.
Which, by the way, that, that, those structure changes, I think, it makes the job easier. It'll lead up the money, yeah, but it makes the job easier in the schools that I go.
Well, we just need to have that discussion and bring out, bring the people.
Have you proposed to the school districts about raising the contract or?
Yes, we're doing that right now.
Percent? I think it was, it wasn't at fifty percent before?
Uh, of the entire cost of an F T E was thirty-five percent.
That they pay.
That they pay. We are negotiating to pay seventy-five or eighty percent of the.
Is that on the S R O?
Yes, yeah. That would be, that's moving in the right of the direction.
Yes.
I just had one other thought, though, when I was talking about funding whatever we need to fund. Um. The, the people who attend charter and private schools pay property taxes to the school district, so perhaps it's covered there on their end financially.
Financially.
Yeah.
But, but, but Ogden and Weaver School Districts at least should be at the table.
Right, so we're, okay. We, I will report to the chiefs and we'll see what we can do on that end.
And so we should probably set a meeting up. I think, once we kind of get this flooding a little bit where it handed.
In September?
It's, yeah. Uh, and have that discussion. And, you know, we'll, let's get Wilcox to come in and and the school districts and, yeah.
Okay.
I think we can come up with a resolution, but.
All right, I spoke with the uh, federal marshals today.
Yeah.
And they have an approved feasibility study process they're gonna go through on possible purchase of the Kiesel facility. Or they want to add up.
Really?
Five hundred beds to our facility.
They want to.
They, they, they want to fund it.
They want to fund the expansion.
By above us or join us. There, it's a feasibility study, so we know the process. So the good news is anything from the feds on this type of stuff.
Five hundred beds, did you say?
Up to. So that, so it could take fruition with your grandchildren's grandchildren? Yes, it'll come probably uh, be built out, I think, in twenty eighty on the Fed schedule.
What do they want with the Kiesel facility?
It's possibility.
So you're saying there's an op, they're looking at both options?
We're looking at options of.
Or.
Kiesel.
Or new.
Kiesel, new construction or a combination of both. Yeah, they, Congressman Stewart, according to him, uh, supporting the feasibility study and looking at this because the marshals need, they have no facility in, out in the mid, this in our area in surrounding states except for Las Vegas or in Colorado.
Well, the timing of that becomes pretty critical based upon what our time schedule is.
It is, but that was the question. As I says, well, look, I don't feel comfortable going to the taxpayers and saying, pay the marshals bill. He goes, oh, no, no, no. We will fund it. I says, well, if it's a construction thing, as soon as we start building, if everything goes through right, would be spring of next year. So they think that they may hop on to uh, work their own deal with us and a builder at that point.
So they just, they'd be in charge of their whole facility then?
No, they want us to provide staffing for it.
Um, okay.
There's, there is, so it's, right now is not the time to talk. We just don't know.
All right.
But they, they, you gotta understand that you got the, the marshals who are desperate need because their transports are eight and ten hours to facilities and courts constantly, all the time. And so they want something central here and uh, they are looking at for some reason Weaver County fits the logistics and that's what they want. They started wanting all these things, but none of this is approved by me. This is just their, sharing their thoughts. I haven't given green light. I don't have the authority on some levels to even talk about financing and funding. That's not my thing. But that's what they're telling me. They're gonna do a feasibility and they will share that with us.
Okay, good. I'd like to know.
Right, there is so much ahead of this. This is something we're not gonna decide on today or tomorrow.
Oh.
Right, whether, yeah, don't, I don't want anybody in this room this understanding that we're, we're joining them and we're gonna build this mass. No, no. No, not right now. So there's a lot more involved.
Still, yeah, I, that's, that's pretty good appropriation, so.
Yeah, it's all gonna be funded by them if it goes through. Actually, we're looking out west too.
Hmm.
How far?
Where your, uh, big megastructure uh, thing is.
In the pond.
Yeah, on, out twelve street.
Won't be no different than prison. There'll be plenty of mosquitoes.
Yeah.
Something for us to talk about in the future is, it's a, it's a timing thing. Because if we build the facility for them, there's no interest or motivation for them to.
That's right.
Other than getting reimbursement costs. But you're right, the amount of money that they're spending to transport people is huge.
Huge.
And so there's an incentive. Uh, it's gonna reduce their cost.
They will fund the building, not us. They're not asking me to go to the public. They're not asking, they just said that the feds will have the money. They just want to put it on our property so we could possibly do some kind of a, a staffing to help them out. And then there's more to that. There's so much involved.
But it'd be nice to know before, if we go ahead with your project out there, where they're anticipating that that future building may be before we you know, block them out or.
And the size of that building, because if we're gonna have project out and build so many pods.
Yeah.
Then they're gonna say, well, maybe we don't need a larger facility. Very complicated.
There's a lot here. This is just all wishful thinking.
Plumb, okay.
Very. All right, two more things. Uh, this is from Julie. This is a request. Uh, just to let you know that they want to do some maintenance out at the animal shelter. And here's a description and a class. I don't think I have. Thank you. It's about thirty thousand dollars total. And those are the things that they needed, requested that uh. I mean, they already have their budget, probably a fund balance. This is the things that they need out there. Okay.
What's in the room?
They're electronic.
They're trying. Yeah.
So they want to do this as a amendment to their twenty twenty three?
Yes, they want to add it.
Do you budget? Have you talked to Scott Park, do you know?
About which, I I it's mainly Chief Perry and Chief Guard that do all conversating with them. I don't know specifically. I know they're, all I know they're an enterprise. And there's got to be some work done out there with staffing and paying some maintenance.
I know staffing, well, I I don't disagree with the, you know, the list here, but staffing also is an issue too.
Yes.
We're gonna have, since it is an enterprise. We just need to participate in some of this.
Yes, they do. I've said this before and I'll say it again, the county gives away too much.
Yeah.
We need to stop doing that.
Thank you for that, Chris.
You're interested, Sean.
So this is, look back before we go off of this, are they looking to bring something to us or who's in a? Where where do we go with this?
They 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 want the the, but I'm I'm letting you know, but they're gonna look, they're asking for a budget approval for that.
But they're gonna do that.
Yes.
Okay, it's just a heads up.
Hey, what's coming?
Okay, good.
Okay, and the last thing I have is this is D C L's final. Uh it's almost exact to what I passed out before. And I wanted to give you also a heads up of our plans. But uh it, I don't know if you remember from the last time, it's it's pretty much the same, but if you turn your attention to the back page. Uh before we get into it, you'll see the the total cost. But I asked D C L if we could strategize on this to help with the the public relations like the jail. So the discussion is, is they also act as a role as a contractor. So you'll see in the overall budget, you see the Teletown Hall that was. Uh suggested we do, the invoice uh would would go to Teletown Hall. So like printing and mailing would handle uh the the mailers. And so even though there is a a a. A concern of maybe D C L going above what I already pay them, they uh we asked if they could act as a contractor to help. Guide us into the right way to get this campaign. Through this public information. Uh be through the sheriff's office about the jail. So this is what they have quoted.
So the forty six five, is that added everything together?
All together, okay.
Right here, you change that. It's the newest, latest and greatest.
Yes, it needs to be changed.
Yeah, I think we're there for them.
Yes, I can change that, but this is the final draft here.
So you're uh. Your your blush on this, it's not your first blush, but you're several. So how are you feeling about this?
About which part?
About this whole. You looked it over. You feel good about what's in here?
Um, I've leaned on other individuals. This is my first rodeo when it comes to public information on a jail expansion. Uh these are things that have worked. I don't have to commit to this. This is not a contract. This is just a proposal, so I can pick and choose. I don't know if this is right, or we're not done uh with deciding on all of this. But I still need to reach out to others. Uh I think Stephanie could probably help me and a few others. I don't know if this is the the right roadmap for the public information process. I don't know. But I'm not just blindly. This is what I want, you know, I I don't know.
Something that we should probably talk uh after this meeting. I just found this out like thirty minutes ago. I I got a call from Scott Park asking about the current state of the marketing contracts. So I looked them up. Um the contract that you have with D C L expired in February. Of this year, so we'll need to address that.
Okay.
The contracts for all three marketing firms. Uh that we entered into have all expired as well.
Oh, they are.
So.
They just your contract?
They were just your contracts.
Makes sense.
Um so we need to sit down and look at what are options are. And and that's gonna lead into another discussion with Ricky's office is having a contract approval system that is going to. Give us a heads up that these contracts.
Oh, good.
Um so yeah, we need to source for that.
Yeah, let's do that. So we should probably set that up as a sec- separate work meeting discussion.
Yes, and I uh we're gonna gather some information for you to help out and just show you. You know, what our options are, also gathering costs of, you know, these contracts uh over the last several years.
Good. All right.
Would you like our office to go through this? Um I was gonna go.
Yeah, we've dis- we've discussed this. This is, yeah, you and I agree, this is something you, every step. We want to make sure we coordinate.
We'll go through and we'll just highlight. And one of the things I thought about doing. If you're okay with this, is maybe, you know, preliminary, we say, yes, this type of stuff is good, but we have kind of like a review committee before press releases go out, just.
Yeah, and I would love any other references if someone could tell me this is a good plan or not, right?
Yeah.
I I I don't know, I'm not as as good as politicians as there are others in our area, but. This works, I want to support it. If it doesn't, let's do something else, right?
I don't know. Personally, I don't know what this is either.
Oh, yeah, that's. But this is, you know, we reached out and they said this is what will work. You know, uh Stephanie and I talked, this is could be anywhere from thirty to a hundred thousand dollars as a public information. Uh I told uh D C L I need something, but I don't, I'm not gonna spend a hundred thousand or anything goes to that. So.
And and maybe parsing it out too, because I know G S B S is part of their current contract. We're going to be negotiating, talking about bond advertising. Um but I don't know what the cost.
I don't, yeah, I don't know either.
And they'll bring expertise that D C L won't have, so there might be pieces that.
Yeah, right.
That we turn to them because.
Wouldn't hurt to get their input.
It's not their first rodeo.
Yeah, they've done especially jails. They've done plenty.
Right.
Yeah.
That'd be good. So question for you on that, Sheriff. Our meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, we went through. That spreadsheet that had like the three or three options. Did we make any?
Yes.
Progress on that, I know.
Okay, great.
So this is our timeline um for the project in general. And right now we are uh we are through the R P process. Um. Uh that's where the that team, that part of the team is working on the project phase design contract. And then the project design negotiations. Um we will be able to provide an update for you on that on May first. Um what we're aiming for is this project phase one design due on the twenty ninth. And that will, that will be the real numbers that we didn't have for you at the last meeting. Uh we had kind of the projections and the scenarios, um and the and the menu will actually have the same menu, but with. Real not, real updated numbers.
Real numbers.
Those numbers were from, uh you know, the original feasibility stuff.
Right, right.
So we'll have those for you guys. Um we'll do, we're aiming to do a file presentation. Um before uh July seventh. And I know these are coming, these are fast and hard dates, but it's because we have a legal requirement that we're gonna have to meet. Uh down there on the on the on the twenty fourth. So we're aiming to have a decision meeting after a presentation on July tenth. Where you guys will get together and say, okay. These are the numbers, these are the scenarios, this is, we are gonna move forward, we aren't gonna move forward, if we move forward, it'll look like this.
Right.
Um and that that will be the flesh out meeting.
And what was our date on that?
Uh July tenth. And we we can shift a tiny little bit. We have a little bit, but we want to make sure the reason that tenth is is is. There is because we have this bond issuance resolution on the on the twenty fourth. But we've got to give our bond council about June weeks to get all of that together so that they can get with Chris's team to legal. To get everything, be voted on 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 the twenty fourth. Um and then the bottom part of this is the marketing piece. So I think in the interim, before we get the final numbers on the twenty ninth. I'm happy to work with you and getting some different quotes and kind of getting some other options. You obviously won't want to pull the trigger on the marketing piece until you guys make the final.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna start until July. I'm just.
Yeah.
The D C L and all these other groups, it's just, I want to make sure you guys are not surprised on July tenth, right? You guys notice I like to bring out stuff early so you're prepared.
I like that a lot.
There's no hard commitment with D C L.
No.
Yeah, so uh happy to work with you on that. We've got that budgeted into the timeline uh for the marketing piece, um but we're right on track. Uh right on track.
Good.
Twenty ninth is, and we'll keep, and Sheriff now will give you a couple more updates before the twenty ninth. But um the twenty ninth is the day that we get the, we get the full numbers back and then we'll put that presentation together before you get it to you next week.
So we're headed down the right path.
We are headed down the right path.
Nice. A good thing about all of this is, I I I said this last meeting, there has to be uh express gratitude appreciation. For everybody that's helped us. I put a call to action in your meeting and says. Damn it, I need help, right? Cause I can't do this on my own. I don't have these expertise. And what the cool thing was, it was like an automatic car wash. Everybody came in. Chris was been absolutely wonderful and so Stephanie and a whole bunch of others, everyone's coming together. We have a duty to make sure we present accurate information. Not only what we do, but to the public on what are, what we're supposed to be doing with the jail. And so we're not gonna do this unless it's right.
Yeah.
So this is great kudos to everyone helping on this project.
That, sure.
And I would say you're kind of using this committee that um Gage you have us creating. We're using this as as we're pulling out our now our special projects to me. And we're running the sewer crew, we're running some of the other big projects through so that all of us are on the same page. And then we can have conveyed accurate information to you guys. Uh and so everyone has an a- access to these these spreadsheets that we have online at any given time in the process. Um you can call me or ask any of the team members where we at. And we can provide that information pretty instantaneously, but it tracks, it tracks the assignment, who's in charge of what action item. Where we at in the progress, it tracks uh whether or not it's completed, but we're also, we track the project management, the funding, the marketing, anything that we need to add into the project. Is being tracked. So we have a very systematic. Way of pushing these big projects through, because. We've got other things that are going on with flooding and things that are unexpected, so it's nice to be able to just keep tabs on these really big projects. And make sure that they're, they're moving in the right direction.
Perfect. That's great. That's what we need.
Yep.
Process.
Thank you.
Like.
Well, that's what I like to do.
That's why you're heading this up. Sheriff, anything else?
No, what can I do for you guys?
Well, just pass on uh our thanks from the commission for, I think it was Chief Reese. And when I called you about getting the inmates out to do sandbag.
They're doing more today.
Good. So that's, that's big, I mean.
It's fantastic.
That's, you know, to put, to show that the public that we're out there, you know, these guys are putting forth the effort and. Difficult times means a lot. So appreciate that.
Sheriff, Chairman, I have one other thing that I kind of want to throw out, since we're talking about public safety and the sheriff's department. Um Sarah Swan, our H R director contacted me today and is very interested in the county entertaining an idea of. Uh changing some legislation on the state level that would allow retired uh law enforcement officers to come back. And not be penalized for coming back and working. And would that be beneficial for you, Sheriff?
The track we are on in twenty to thirty years, our deputies and officers will be responding in wheelchairs and walkers. It it it's a great, sorry, it's a Band-Aid. It will, we'll take anything we can get. Don't, don't, don't take it negative. We shouldn't say like.
I wanted to get some feedback before we talked about going to committee or even going to rewrite the legislation or even looking at that, so.
We would have to look at the stats from the uh police academy over the year. Uh ten fifteen years ago, they had four or five hundred people wanting to come in. We're not even, we're we're down seventy five percent from that, people coming in this profession. We can't, we can't sustain this. Projectory, we can't.
That's, that's a, that helps.
It helps, and I'm sorry, I came across negative, but. We had a meeting this morning.
Something that would be beneficial.
It would, absolutely.
Gage and I could work on for legislative session next year.
It would.
That would be beneficial.
It would be very beneficial. It's just, this morning we had some dismal news on, yeah, look. Uh for example, Ogden City's fully staffed right now, but we're bringing in a lot of uh laterals because they're paying really well now. You know, and then once we, we become the top pair, there's gonna be a shift here, and that's just what happens. And it's not good for anybody. It's just not. And it's, 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 it's something we're, we're really trying to, yes.
We can remove that eighteen thousand dollar cap off of the retirees and let them come back and work. I I think that's uh could help while we come up with better solutions.
Right, but but part of the, part of the issue with Weaver County, which at the time before COVID was a great idea, and I still support it. Was a great idea that we did the buyout, but these guys can't come back full time for three more years now, three to four more years.
What was it, four year requirement?
Five year.
Yeah, so we could get that changed on the, if we could get that changed on the state gauge, that could, I think that can help, but it's.
We have a lot of people that, they're, they're, they're going to other agencies, but they would come back here. They did take the money, they know about the agreement. But they would love to come back with their other agencies.
I think we have a good chance of changing that this year. A lot of the people that were.
And then I'd like to add it on to our, our, our list.
Worth doing.
Yeah. That, that was it. Just wanted to kind of bring that.
Thank you, sorry again for.
No, it's fine.
Thanks for the update, Sheriff.
So we love about.
Thank you.
Yep, see you tonight.
John, you're up on the dump trucks.
You're going down the hall real quick and grab the other.
All right, we'll grab a sandwich while we're waiting. How do you get a sandwich?
I was just excited, but Sarah had something. That's what it says.
Yeah. Can we wait?
Um, this is it, Joe, is that guy actually?
He's gone, he had the family thing yet, yeah, Joe?
Yeah.
He's up taking stuff out of the river this time.
Yeah, his daughter.
Daughter's.
His daughter is going to play again, he need to be. She's on scholarships and they stand to be able to play anymore.
Yeah, she probably doesn't get. Okay.
How they going?
Morning.
Morning. Hey, is Gar Hunter Max Hunter's brother? You know?
No.
Well, I, I looked at that and I thought, is Gar his real name? Is that really Max? Cause he looked a lot.
Better wait for Sean.
Uh we're gonna go ahead and probably get started.
Okay.
Remember, I believe it's twelve thirty.
Sure, you guys got a awesome. You got school, okay, yeah, twelve thirty. We got a hard start, sorry. All right, let's get moving here. There's Joe.
Wow.
How he did roll in.
How'd you do that?
Did you go up to that river today, Joe?
Yeah.
Yep. That was a pile of. Yeah, that. Yeah, Chad, you were the one that was up there?
They got this morning, yeah.
Were you?
They cut the what?
Beaver Dam, it has a lot of.
No, was that a beaver dam?
It looked like, yeah, there.
Oh, there was a time, we might have one on the other river too. Check out, I know we've had a couple there in the past. Yeah. Well, good job. Appreciate you doing that. Okay, let's go to our eleven thirty A M discussion. We've got your dump trucks, uh fuel sites, snow blowers, Bill Ross, Sean Wilkinson is with us now. Joe Hadley.
Scott Park.
Jamie Green, Scott Park. And uh.
Okay.
Okay, who's taking, I'll let Bill start.
Bill? So let's start with Chris, talk about dump trucks first if we can. So. We appreciate commissioners for being supportive. We've been replacing one dump truck a year uh for last, what, three years, two years, right? This we got thirty. But it takes us a little over a year to get them. So by the time they, the cabin chassis are pretty easy to get, but to build them and to do the beds and everything takes a long time. So right now, uh. But we have these four, we've talked about these four international trucks for quite a few years now and. Just, they're always, this year they spent more time, they spent more time in the the shop than they did on the road. It's just, and we got a lot of issue, that's what, these guys can speak more a little bit to that, but. It's hard because this one year replacement was replacing our old trucks, so we're not necessarily replacing these internationals. But we got to find a way to get them out of our fleet. So we're here to discuss whether we, would be feasible, if we could. Uh and we've got Scott Park here, that if we could find a way to buy them out or something and to get rid of them and Jamie has some costs. And we've got Scott Park here, that if we could find a way to buy them out or something and to get rid of them and Jamie has some costs on what we can sell them for and kind of what they are. Uh but even if we could try to replay, get two dump trucks approved a year where we're at least replacing. Uh some of those internationals, cause right now we're, we're just, we're just replacing our old Max and other trucks that are at the end of their life, that we're just. Pushing down the road. So whenever, those are higher priority than these, but this year the expenses are just, they're just climbing, they just.
Quite a bit through this winter.
They have and.
International's been sitting in the shop.
Yeah, so. And so maybe, maybe real quick, cause hers is probably the shortest, let's talk a little bit about, like, let's call it the cost. That, that we, that each, that the trucks have taken.
So this, and this is basically.
Yeah.
Operation cost.
Yeah, and then the.
Those are repair costs.
These are just what, yeah.
Yeah, these are just repair costs for.
They're just what we.
The season which goes from October first and I did until March twenty first, and then we've got our year to date totals. And all of twenty twenty-two totals.
Now, brand new trucks is just a little over two hundred thousand, right?
Yeah, roughly two hundred thousand.
Around two hundred thousand for a brand new truck, and this is how much.
Those two hundred thousand to buy a new truck?
Yes.
Okay. Now, when you said buyout, are some of these on leases? What's the buyout?
No, I mean, I mean. So how we.
The county owns all four of these internationals, so they were purchased by fleet. So Joe leases those trucks through the fleet.
Pay us like anybody else does with their vehicles. So they basically buy them back, county pays for them upfront.
We pay for it and then charges the municipal services.
Yeah, so it's just, we're just changing pockets. But keep in mind, the fleet doesn't have money to purchase more dump trucks, so.
So we've already approved for the next four years, three hundred thousand dollars a year out of fleet to buy four replacement trucks. So, and that was to do this rotation. So what you're asking here is an additional four over four years, or are you trying to get four?
I think ideally we would like to replace two over the next two years. In addition to the regular rotation dump truck that we are getting to replace, the older ones that are in the early nineteen nineties that are at the end of their life.
So you want three this year, three next year, and then one and one?
Yeah.
That would be nice, cause then we, then we'd be caught up in.
Three this year, three next year. Okay, so what does that look like?
The fleet fund would be, I don't think the fleet fund could handle that without some significant cuts to the other vehicles in the fleet. Um we do have some money in the municipal services fund, that could be used to buy some of these vehicles outright. That'd just be something we have to discuss, but if we wanted to, the, the fleet doesn't have enough money to buy all that and continue to maintain the fleet, we keep the fleet fairly lean.
So let's look at another pocket of money.
So we have um one point nine million dollars in the municipal services fund that is above our ideal fund balance. We had a good year last year, twenty twenty-two, we had a good year, year before that, we added about a million dollars each year to the fund balance, so we've got about two million dollars above what we need. And as per fund balance policy. So if we have that and you wanted to buy some dump trucks outright, you could, but that's also the same part that would be used to buy, say, a snow blower. So we're gonna have to balance the equipment needs and see which one, you know, maybe we could. I think if we could afford one additional dump truck a year, I don't think it could afford the two. So maybe if we did four, we have the four regular rotation, plus four years, do one more fleet vehicle, you know, vehicle out of fleet. And then you would have enough money in the municipal services if you needed to buy a snow blower. Um you could possibly do that, so I just don't think we can do it all at once.
What about the cost savings to the repairs? Back to those, yeah.
And so the fleet doesn't pay for the repairs, municipal services paid for the repairs? Does that make sense?
So that's a good raise to take it out of municipal services.
We could, but then the only thing that I hate to do is we start mixing, well, which vehicles are fleet vehicles and which vehicles are department vehicles, and we start to get all. We've kind of consolidated everything to have fleet vehicles and not have each department buying their own. I hate to, to go back. Uh we could do a general fund infusion into the fleet fund if you wanted, basically pull money out of the general fund, fund balance. Give it as a capital infusion to the fleet fund and then have the fleet fund buy them. I mean, we have some options to do that if you're interested in doing something like that. Um but then, you know, you get paid back over the next, what, seven, ten years, just like a dumb truck, right?
But, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but when he's talking, it's coming out of municipal service fund, not coming out of the overall stuff, it's coming out of Joe, Joe's actual day to day budget. So more we spend on these trucks, the less payment you're getting on the road, the less maintenance you're getting on the road in the summer. That's where it's kind, he's paying the bills, it's not coming out on the backend somewhere else, and so.
We get that.
And then fleet would still recover some of the costs with the sale of these other trucks.
Yeah, cause the blower come out of the special tax assessment they did for Powder Mountain and Prop One.
So, well, Prop, not Prop One, but special taxes.
But what about, like, what are talking to buy?
So that's your whole tax up there, um that special assessment tax is a hundred some odd thousand dollars a year. It'd take ten years if you had no additional costs, so it's, it's not a good option.
So, now keep in mind, our blower, we, you've heard us tell stories about blower, right? So even if we don't choose to buy a new blower, it's gonna cost about over a hundred, probably about a hundred grand or more to, to go through and refurbish that one. So we can keep it on the road, which is definitely worth it. When you look at the cost of the blower, which I have right here. Um on the back there, well, the, the cheapest one's like seven hundred and fifty something thousand, and the other one's like eight hundred and something, so. I'll give you these and.
We put, you sink a hundred grand on the other blower. How long's that gonna is it?
That's the thing, yeah. At the end of the day, that, that blower, if we keep it, needs to just be a backup blower that we use for like the divide and. North Fork and a year like this year. So, I mean, we do, but it's a good investment for us to save as a backup blower. Uh with the amount of snow that we have, but we do need to look at future and, and, and I know the future impels corporations and all kinds of things, so. But we need to keep that on the back of our minds that if we keep the roads that we have, we're gonna need a new blower eventually.
It's a ninety-four.
I don't disagree with that. Considering that we bought it for thirty thousand about seven years ago.
It's both thirty-five, yeah.
Uh it's, it's putting a hundred into it right now is a great investment for what we paid for it.
But is that the bill?
Use of a hundred thousand versus. What they're saying is we should spend a hundred thousand. It's just so we have it.
Can I say something about the blower?
Sure.
So I like the blower. I mean, you know, I think it does a good job. I mean, it doesn't need maintenance. But I think in the long run, we're gonna need a new one, and I think in ten years, when. All these homes are developed up out of mountain, let's say ten years, I don't know when. But right now, I, you know, with all this amount of snow, I've always been able to maintain it and everything, but down in the Colosac, it's called Spring. Spring Canyon. Spring Park.
I don't know how you do that.
So I have one place to put it in between two houses on the north side, and so it got so big this year that. I mean, I have nowhere to put it, and I usually can keep up on it, but when it's just snowing every day, you can't.
No.
So with the new snow blower, these new ones, you can have the chute, you know, ours just moves one way or the other. You can put the chute and it shoots it forward to where I could shoot us in between those houses. And get rid of it. And then where they're building those other two houses, well, as you go up, I mean, I have nowhere to put the snow. So I could either, if we did have it, shoot it in front of me and I just work it away, but there's gonna be houses all the way up there, right?
That eventually, yeah, yeah.
I know Jared don't want to hear this, but we could blow it in us, in a dump truck to get the snow out of there. Cause that's the, that's the only way.
Well, that shoots a cost up.
I just hate to ever start doing that, cause everybody in Nordic or.
Yeah.
Or they're gonna think we should haul it away.
That's a, that's.
You know the tunnel up at Powder Mountain, you drive through the tunnel? It's the ski bridge. That, I mean, in one night, that can close up. In one night, with the wind and everything, I have no way to get rid of that. So I have to push it and push it, you know, with the loader. And just put it on the other side. I mean, I'll spend a half a day doing that, but if, once in a while. You know, if Powder Mountain's cut up, they'll just make a pass through it, cause there's, snow blower can shoot straight, so he'll just run it through. As he's going out back, but that's not very often, cause they're busy doing their stuff, you know, but. I mean, there's a few things that, you know, it's a newer one with the chute, like I say. The old one, I mean, if it had some maintenance, it does a good job.
So let me ask another question. We didn't have that road. And then we just put the hundred in, and then we just have a backup when we need it, right?
Yep, yep.
Where are we on that negotiation of them?
So they, they are still, they still have not gotten back to me. We brought it up when they came and met with you a few weeks ago. And they, I, I don't know that their board is seriously considering it, because it puts so much of an extra burden on them. Even if we pay them two hundred thousand dollars a year. That'd be more. You know, with more equipment and more people, it, it's probably cost prohibitive. So I'm still waiting to hear back.
I don't think we'll hear from them. And we've tried to bid it out, the private companies to do it, they, they, we have one guy from Wyoming that isn't capable, he puts in every time, and he can't even.
Unfortunately, it's our problem.
But anyhow.
You know, that, where he's, we're down at the bottom of that Goldilocks, it's stacked, the snow's stacked. Notice it was thirty-five, forty feet on top, it's on top of the, the pump that they're using for the sewer lift station for Powder Mountain water.
Yeah, it's close to, I try to keep it away from that.
There, yeah, there was so much, I was up there like last week and I was just, everywhere I went, I felt like in a little tunnel, a mouse tunnel. And then I couldn't, it was just amazing. Loaders, there were, there were not just loaders, but there were excavators that were there. I'd see the top of the excavator area, it was just.
Oh, it's amazing.
That's unbelievable, so.
Okay, well, anyhow, one of the results, one of the possibilities is we have to raise tax up on that district.
But that's not a, it's not a district, it's a special zone, or some, what did you call it, a special?
We've set it up in the taxes, yeah, it's, it's a municipal services district.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's.
But you can set the boundaries to that district in any way that you want. Um and there's no formality that you really have to go through. I mean, I think we passed a resolution.
We did, we have to get it to the tax commission and they actually have to have a geographical boundary, so we, it, it's, even though it's not a local district or special district, you basically have to jump through those same. It's already created and up there, and we already, we're already levying the tax.
Increasing the tax for just that area in this space.
Yeah, it'd be just a truth in fact.
Yeah, we need to look at. Yeah, the same thing we do with municipal service fund.
I was saying, the incentive. Uh or even just the tax.
The fee we looked at would be almost impossible to collect.
Yeah, we, we talked about fees and, and that's, you know.
We have no mechanism to collect it or enforce it, and we have a lot of owners that don't even live in the country, so.
Yeah. All right, we can have that discussion that.
Bring up with these, with the trucks and the blower, we're still six months to a year.
Right.
So if you bought them today.
Well, the blower's four hundred and fourteen days, so it's over a year. We wouldn't even have it for next year if you're at order.
And the trucks are how?
A year. But, but Kodiak does have ones that we could lease in the, in the meantime, I'm sure we could work it, work something if we ever need. They, they said that we break down, so we redo our one, we try to go, but if we break down, they have ones that we could lease. We need to do. Yeah, so.
Is that one in Berlin?
Yeah.
Sounds like, and that sounds like we're. Only option.
The cost of two, the two that we were looking at are on your back.
Yeah.
And so.
What portfolio is this anyway?
Yeah. So anyhow, so we back up to the dump trucks? So what?
Yeah, back up.
Can we, can we, I mean, give us some direction on what you're thinking with these dump trucks?
Can I pop in really quick here, and please don't shoot me, Sean? I mean, this is what we're trying to do with the strategic capital projects plan, to have all these laid out and, and to have a replacement schedule. Now, we did talk about this in the last budget cycle.
Right.
But this is an awful lot of money to approve outside of our budget process. I mean, this is more than what we've gotten the whole last budget cycle, probably the last two years combined. Which I don't have any issues, I'm not saying that it's bad that we need dump trucks, I'm just saying, I think we ought to, if we, if we're not even gonna be able to get it for next year, if we order it now, then if we order it for now, or if we order it for. Two months from now, it doesn't make any difference. Would it make sense to make sure that we have a really good capital projects plan with all the equipment and it's. I mean, this is gonna take everything that we have out of the fleet and the municipal services fund, so this is gonna be it for the next few years, there's not gonna be anything else, so. Is this all that we need? Is there another long stick? Other pieces of equipment that we need to consider and prioritize in that, so I, I would hate to do. I mean, this is gonna take everything that we have in the municipal services fund, everything that we've saved up, if we were to.
Unless we do a general fund.
Unless you. Yeah.
And I'd rather keep it fleet, just because it keeps it consistent, but.
I think so, you know, and we could, so there's some options like that, but I'm just saying, it would make sense in my mind to have this as part of a whole municipal services plan. To make sure that this, this is really what we need, because if there's something.
So you're, you're talking about making a decision in the budget session.
No, I think you're talking about in a couple of months, see where.
Well, that's where the budget session starts, right?
Oh, okay.
It, it, it's just an awful lot of money, I'm, I'm trying to, not just with Sean's departments, but all of them to, to funnel in our budget. Change requests that exceed the normal budget request, if that makes sense, and I'm just trying to funnel them in.
But I don't disagree with that at all, but as far as order, you say you're a year out, is it? Uh what, what would be required?
Kind of like the Zamboni, where we don't pay till we get, well, the one that comes the quickest is the truck, right? It's usually only a few months, correct?
Yeah, well, no, it's, it's the trucks a year.
And yeah, trucks.
A truck, the truck's the year, and then we order the bed as soon as we order the truck, and then it goes straight from.
So you don't pay for it till the next budget cycle, but you need to have, be aware of that.
But, you know, I mean, my thought was, so if we ordered it today in April, we're gonna miss the next year anyway, so it's April before the truck's delivered, so what if it's delivered in July? Or in August, it's still before the next snow season.
Yeah.
And that gives us enough time to at least.
Yeah.
Work on it and, and.
Another one of these internationals off the trucks or off the road for snow season. But summer months, they don't have the huge repairs.
Right, but what's guys, even if we ordered, we're not gonna have it till after snow season next year, so.
Yeah, so I, I think that makes some sense.
But so I think I'd rather go that way.
I agree.
And look at that entire capital, I, I would like to get you two or three trucks. Uh you know, ASAP, so just so you know.
We're toast though, that, that blower goes down up there, we're toasted there, aren't we?
That best operator in the county, country, right?
I saw that machine work last week, I was up there with Joe, and you're in Nordic.
Let me tell you what, when it takes it, does a Toyota or Nissan go through that chute a little easier? Do you know which one they made?
Subaru goes through. But I hope you got the cost of that uh two gallons of, of day oil in there.
And then, yeah.
Three gallons, that'd be.
Three gallons of, that'd be easy day.
Every other day.
It's. Well, it's snowing up there again right now, sorry to let you know. I just got.
He was just saying, he's been off the mountain for five days. They must have put, he can go to the crappiest job there is in the county, and he looks really good.
So what else, Bill?
So, um, other than the blower and the, and the thing, I want to talk a little bit about the, the fuel stations. Because we're on a sixty day uh delivery time, and, and so if you, in that packet I gave you, there's two, there's cost for the upper valley and the lower valley. Uh fuel sites, and I've been talking to Scott Park, cause our last conversation, we. You know, if something big happens, emergency wise, it's real important we have these, cause first thing, they're on our properties and they're kind of under our control. But if something happens, there's no fuel trucks gonna come and you're not gonna get gas at the Maverick, you know, so we need truck for our, our law enforcement and our emergency services. And also for the equipment and stuff that needs to be operated in case of emergency, so I think it's important that we have those. You look at the cost, one is like, one was like, the best way to cost of us not doing them three years ago is like significant, so. The two costs I have here, if you look at the back, I have what it cost, what the previous year's costs were, so the one down here is four hundred nine thousand, five hundred seventeen. If we'd have done it.
You're looking at, I don't have it.
In the, in this packet thing here, that should.
We got a lot of blue pages.
Oh, look at the one that says back month, uh there's, there's two of them, one for the upper, the upper valley, one was two hundred and sixty-two thousand. There it is, but in two thousand nineteen, that one was a hundred and sixty-six thousand, so what's that? Ninety something thousand, it, it's costing us more to do today. But the larger site down here now, a lot of this has to do also with the quantity of gas we're moving out of there now. Cause we had to up, they had to upsize, and so that's why you saw it two thousand twenty, twenty twenty, it went up to two thirty-two because of the fuel usage. And the different tanks that were gonna need to be used, and, but now it's four hundred nine thousand, so it increased two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And if we would have just replaced them, but if we would have replaced them in twenty twenty, we'd have been okay, two thousand nineteen, we'd be under fueled for what we use, so. But anyhow, I talked to Scott Park. I feel this is, this is, this is, this is, isn't just a municipal service fund thing, this is something that the state uses.
Right.
Uh now, keep in mind in here also, we then need to really put some pressure on them for the state to remove the tanks, cause originally they were going to, but they're not removing tanks anymore. And it doesn't say in our thing that they will remove them. So it, only time it says that is in our, our, our bit from Spackman saying, if the state doesn't remove the tank, there's an added fee in there. So right, this, this cost does include, but it's like twenty-nine grand to remove the.
If the state doesn't do it.
If the state doesn't, they both included in these prices, but it'd be nice if we could put some pressure on the state. To get them to do that, they're just kind of trying to. To get them to do that. They're just kind of trying to get it out of, getting out of the. The process of doing that. And so.
We, we did put aside some money for the Ogden Valley site.
You know, a hundred eighty-three thousand, we put aside a few years ago. But that's not going to be that down.
Yeah.
But that was out of our capital, countywide capital projects fund. So we bought off. Last time when we first allocated it, that it was a countywide service so we could use a countywide rate and not just the incorporated area because our shares offered to you, is it right? So it's a countywide. So I think we'd be fine to take it out of the capital projects fund, which we've got plenty of money. You know, a million or two million, if we needed to, we could pull out of the capital projects for the fuels.
We probably shouldn't hold off on that any longer.
And that's the thing, they, 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 they require fifty percent down, Spackman does, especially where counties normally like other bigger entities, they'll, they make and pay the whole. Uh, like three quarters of it, fifty percent down, they'll get the tanks ordered, they're sixty days out. We've kind of met with the guy later that laid out the sites, so. If we can kind of, kind of get some thought and decisions made going that way, we can start to.
Did you talk to Bryce about possibly doing some of the electrical and.
I mean, look at that, we're already doing, we can't do the, so in their bid price, it does only cover from the controls from their pumps to their stuff, which they have to do. So. But we can get the power to them, which is, which is, fortunately, that's pretty minimal, unfortunately, for what we're going to do, but. Well, got the road guys that can pack the parking lot. So the plans is that they're not going to be out there under the oil bay anymore. They'll actually be above ground tank. And there'll be two long poles along the south fence or the west fence to kind of know what we. Inside south fence looks like the best where, where the annexes, we'd probably relocate the annex and. Do a couple of things there, but we can do all that in-house. So those are, once you have any other questions, you want to hear some scary stories, but these internationals are safety issue too. We talked about. Some of the trucks and.
So I hope you guys know. When, when, when we came on to the road department, me, Jared and Travis, we inherited these trucks. It wasn't because we didn't do our due diligence. We inherited these trucks and I'm not blaming, blaming anybody before us, but they got them low bid, they got them cheap. There's a reason, I think, because they're dumb. Um, the transmissions were not made to push snow, stop and go up hills. They were made for go over the road. Highway use, so. Um, I, I hope you don't think that.
Actually was on board a little because international, uh. Put a shop up in Far West and that would have been a lot better than running something to Salt Lake every time we got in trouble, but as it's turned out, anything that's. More than a windshield wiper goes to Salt Lake.
It doesn't make any difference. Yeah, okay.
Travis, Travis has been driving one in while his trucks been getting repaired and he just, he, he doesn't care for it.
Yeah, I mean, it's night and day difference from the Mack truck that I drive every day to. It's been broke down for, I don't know, over a month and.
The Mack has?
Yes, so I've been driving international and it's put me in situations going up. Outer mountain road where I've had, uh. I've slid backwards quite often and. I mean, and I've even waited for the state truck to go up and then go up and I've still had problems and it. It's just, I don't know, it's just. Not very safe. I mean, I've had problems on our road up there.
I mean, it's a safety hazard.
And once it. Like you put it in manual, you know, it's automatic, but you can put it in manual. And all of a sudden, like it wants to spin out or something. I mean, I know Jared's driven one before. And then it just goes to like first gear. And it will not let you shift out.
Until you're on level.
Until you're on level ground. So you have like. Oh. I can't remember what morning it was. It was a while ago, but I followed the state up. Well, I spun out. Went into that first gear and it was so tight of snow that he had to wait for me up top. Well, then he thought I was stuck because I never showed up, you know, for, I don't know how long. So he come down and then we met in the worst spot and then I'm, you know, I'm almost went off the edge, you know, and. I mean, it was just a.
What kind of cars, what, what kind of trucks do the state use? Are they auto cars or they?
Mack.
They're Max. That's the one we want. We don't want sturdy. We don't want, but we want Max.
And that's the one, that's where I work on that.
That's how I see it. So they know, they know what's going on.
Yeah, and they all have the same, so that if something, you guys kind of goes out, we have a problem with and they know the problem.
Let's stay consistent.
And that's what we've done over the last three years too. We've taken the first VIN number that we purchased from Max and we've given it to Max. Ever since, so that they can build the exact same truck with us.
So do we have any other options to possibly lease a Mack truck? Let's say, you know, until if we get in the real bind. To get through this next winter season.
As far as snow power goes, our trucks are fairly special because we have in bed Sanders.
Right.
And you just don't find. Okay, you can, you can lease a truck probably, just a regular dump truck.
So we're stuck with ours because of, okay.
So will you remove the beds from ours and put them on the new ones?
And also.
Huh?
No, we got two beds that are called auger beds and we're having trouble with them.
So replace those too.
And our trucks are also built specially for a while. I know, but the new paver makes a difference, but. Wheels have to be in certain spots so they'll back up to our pavers and stuff too and everything.
The overhang of the pad has to be so far back.
Yeah.
And as far as return on investment, you can get more on a completed truck versus just the cabin chassis when you resell.
Ton of money in labor, I think, to tear one down and put them on another.
Yeah, probably not, especially if we get Sanders that are the last year.
All four of those internationally. There's been two different styles.
All right. Well, I think we understand. We need to solve that as quickly as possible. So Scott will look at some options for us to consider. And I'd probably like to even look at those options before we start budget, just so we, we all have a clear picture of what.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to Sean and you guys. And I just wanted to come with a comprehensive plan because this is so big that this is, I mean, unless we decide to do a tax increase, it's going to take everything out of municipal services. Yeah, let's see what you really.
Hold on, if we lease. It, you know, you said with the snow blower, you could lease a snow blower and not have to wait four hundred and fourteen days.
We can find out what.
But if you lease a truck. Is it still even?
Yeah, they're just high in demand.
You know, I, it's hard for me. I gotta get into some kind of business where people are paying me seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars and I'm a four hundred and fourteen days average.
You know, the other thing is it takes eight months. It takes eight months just to get the motor. It's a German made motor and it's, it's eight months just to get the motor.
Is the state happening?
Yeah.
So the state does have a blower.
They just got a new blower like this and I'd like to go see it when they start to open Monte Cristo up to see it work.
Yeah, let's.
They used it last year.
Get ahold of Carlos, tell him you want to come and take a look at it.
Yeah.
They told me, they told me they didn't like it as much as their own one.
They're blaming a bunch of that on. Patient stuff like it doesn't have as much power and it is also smaller than their old.
Will you check that out, Joe?
Yeah, for sure. So as far as the fuel sites go, do we, we try to figure out what we're going to do there?
I think we're going to see fuel sites.
Information, I'll put a budget request change request through to you guys for your approval for the.
That's really what you came in here. You, you really want fuel sites, then you just distract. All right, we got fifteen minutes before Commissioner Bowles has to go to school.
We got another thing, don't we?
Yeah, we do. Sean, is this your deal?
This is, this will be planning again, uh, Charlie Bill and Ray.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Yeah, appreciate you going up. I thought that was probably a beaver dam.
Yeah, we got a vent on the west side of the, actually one of your.
On Harrison's?
Yeah, I think it was him. They drag a little.
Go on.
Always saying, look, if we can keep it within the bank, let's keep it within the bank.
I completely agree.
Yeah, and it was kind of whether depending about.
We have, we have got that.
Yes, it's up there.
Is rain coming tonight?
I think it's, I looked at the. I think it's finished by three o'clock as well.
Oh, no. My opinion is we hold off share.
I, I agree. So I have.
No, I think we hold off.
Thank you.
Okay, Harvey, okay.
Well, I want to see what the flows are. I don't want to make that decision until we see what tomorrow.
Well, remember the peak change from tonight at ten PM till tomorrow.
And go out there. How long did it take to steal water to come out?
The flow, the flow is going like this right now. So let's just, I think before we make the decision right now, I think we make the decision. On the spot, I'll be out for tomorrow, eight a.m.
Well, it's on the spot better than they're, they're projected by forty-five hundred Friday. I don't think their projection.
I'll be out there at eight o'clock.
But they know I'm leaving in twelve minutes.
That's your deal. And you want me out there, we go out there. So let's just get on the phone call.
It's actually really fun.
You realize this?
Free ice cream every Wednesday. Good to see you. All right, sorry. Just a little thing called fudge. All right, Rick, we're to our twelve o'clock regarding promontory commerce center park. Perfect. So what we did is we invited the park district and the developer because you did have some questions about how that park is going to relate. Okay, out of promontory. So I'll turn over to the park district and the developer to talk about. What they're proposing and just make sure you guys are on board with it. Okay, go ahead.
So I believe everybody has had a chance to see our agreement. At this time, so, um, you guys want to take this thing off and done and done, but. We worked pretty hard. Back and forth a little bit on some sticking points. I think, uh. The short of our plan is, you know, once this commentary gets to a certain point in its development and. We have a trigger point in our agreement that says we'll work with them and they'll help us design a park and lay out a master plan for us. And then we will take. Kind of the horn from there. They also offered some qualities of some items, but you know, that design and that master plan will kind of. Lay out how we. Pull those items in, right? Because there's a lot of things that have to happen to build a park in particular on this ground. As you know, you were just talking about it. This ground is currently underwater. So, um, we'll have to work with some of the agencies of the state and do a few things in advance. Once we get all that ready to go, so we're not misfiring on, you know, taxpayer money and, you know, the commerce centers money. We'll have all that planned out and then we'll step out into a park. You know, one of the things I've been telling folks here, I think it's a great opportunity. The committee thinks it's a great opportunity for the community. You know, commerce area aside, this folks, you know, the park, I think it's great, you know, promontory is probably great to have focus on its benefits. But the park will be a benefit to the community for. For a long time. And so, but the thing people need to know is it's probably going to take us a few years. My guess is five. To seven years to put this park in place. There's a lot of work that's going to have to be done over. The course of time, you know, and we want to make sure we do it right from A to Z and not start in the middle somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah, I can give you just a summary of, of, uh, improvements that we're, we as the developer have agreed to provide. Um, so like Joe talked about, the park area will be on the, the west side of fifty-nine hundred, north side of nine hundred. And it's, we have the ability to donate up to about thirty-five acres of land. And so that will be deeded to them in an improved way. So they'll give you the list of improvements here. Then we've agreed to provide. It's seventy-five hundred lineal feet of asphalt trail. And the master plan that we work with the parks district to help put into place will cover the whole thirty-five acres. And then they'll be able to dictate where these improvements go. So. That we just, that's why we did quantities is so that the parks district can say, we want to focus on this five acres and really. Uh, amplify that five acres. Then over time we'll improve, you know, bigger pieces. But, uh, so part the trail, seventy-five hundred linear feet. We've got eleven park benches, uh, that'll be scattered throughout the, the park. Uh, you have eight trash cans. We're going to build a Bowery, which will include restrooms. A water refilled station, a maintenance shed. It'll have all the utility connections and things like that to support those things. Uh, we'll be improving, uh, fifty paved parking stalls that will be adjacent to the Bowery coming off fifty-nine hundred. That will be included. Uh, we're going to do a wetland delineation for them. And we're giving them some of the water shares that we're getting, uh, as part of our acquisitions. So they'll have it seated at the table. On the night irrigation board. And we're also giving them just a fifty thousand dollar allowance that they can use for whatever they want. So if they want to put in a little patch of grass. They want to plant trees or other types of plants, it's just a fifty thousand dollar donation on top of the, the hard improvements that we're giving them. That they'll be able to allocate where they want. So. I think it's a unique, like I, I mentioned in an email that I sent out to the group, I think this is a. A unique thing, uh, given that a lot of the cities in the, in the state don't require. I need a parks impact fee if you're a commercial type project. So. It's a unique opportunity for us to work together and build something that the parks district and the community can be proud of.
Right, great. Questions?
Our great statement.
And I, I appreciate that. I mean, when I had a meeting with you last week, whenever it was, I cleared up, I, I just. Didn't know that you had that. I didn't probably have that list in addition to the fifty thousand. Yeah, my only concern right from the start is the, is the park district to understand what they're getting into here. Because the last thing I want to have happen is get down the road four or five years and then have you come back to the county saying. We've got, because that, I know that ground, it's not the easiest ground to make it into a park. We got a lot of water and I just want to make sure the park district knows what they're getting into. They're signing off on it. And you're not going to come back on the county in the future, say, we made a mistake, we need an extra five hundred thousand from the county. And we don't have it.
Correct. And I, I don't think it'll be a funding thing. We will continue to work with the county. As I was talking with Charlie earlier, I mean. The county has other initiatives and say, out in our park district, right, for public space and trails. There are other green space things on the master plan. And so we're going to, we're going to continue to have a continuous relationship with the county. I do not believe that'll be, you know, us looking for funds though, right? Because the way we're set up. You know, if we have to a special district, we can impact the, we can raise our, our tax rate if we need to, if we want to, don't scare anybody, please. That we have ways to fund things. We, we do grant grants and have other opportunities. So I think.
Okay.
I think we will. Have a great start with, you know, with that list of items, which I think is just shy, land value aside. It's just shy of a million dollars.
Right.
Um, worth of things, which is great start for a park. Um, it is a challenging piece of land. I threw, I flew the drone over the other day. Because I'm hoping to work with some state agencies and I want them to see kind of what it looks like on a bad year, right? Because we're going to have to look at the Little Weaver drainage to the north, right? Because that's where that pond's supposed to drain. I'm sure you guys have been dealing with this for several weeks, but I do believe there's some things pinching off that drainage right now and we'll work with state or whoever. And we'll work with state or whoever we need to, to make sure we can keep that flowing.
Good point.
Do some bank establishment on that pond before we lay down any trails and stuff like that.
Yeah, well, I think it's going to be a great, uh, relationship. I think it's what you're headed is, uh. Great for the area, great for the park district and, you know, ultimately good for the county, so I have no qualms about it or questions.
I don't either.
Art? What else you need, Rick?
That's it.
Bill, Charlie? He's got, he's got three minutes to fit thirty minutes speech into it.
Forty, forty or so more minutes, so.
All right, you guys have got to go. All right, what else we got, Commissioners? You got to go to school.
Thank you very much, sir.
Where's your meeting?
Your parents alone.
We're at that, over at the Lotus Building.
I like your logo. That's good. Anything else, Sean?
No, sir.
Don't you been in here all day?
I have. It's been interesting, been good.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Nothing else, motion to adjourn.
I want a favor.
I adjourn, thank you. You want to cut us off there on the screen?